I'll wait for the chance to stop. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to this afternoon's meeting of the Planning and the Highways Committee. Abby, I'll hand over to you for the housekeeping arrangements. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. To help keep everyone safe, please maintain social distancing at all times. Please wear a face covering at all times within the venue unless you have an exemption. It can be removed once seated, but you may wish to leave it on. Hand sanitizer will be available for you to use. Please remain seated as much as possible during the meeting and do not congregate around exits and entrances. Please follow any signage which is provided, such as one-way systems, to help keep you safe. If you have any concerns or are unsure, please ask a member of staff. In the event of a fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point is at Tudor Square. Please, can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example, if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll run round the room now and ask all the members to introduce themselves in turn. So we've got Peter.
Good afternoon, I'm Peter Garbutt. I'm councillor for Netheredge and Sharrow.
Brian?
Members Brian Homshaw, I'm councillor for Brumhill and Sharrow Vale.
Chris?
Councillor Chris Rosling-Joseph, Member for the Baiton Ward.
Pete?
Sorry, I'm a councillor, membership of Shea Green Brightside.
He's getting on a bit, Peter. Councillor Tony Damm's councillor for Southey Ward.
Zahira?
Councillor Zahira Nas, councillor for the Donald Ward.
Barbara?
Councillor Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecclesall.
Andy?
Councillor Andrew Sanger, councillor for Woodward.
Roger?
Roger Davison, councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
Richard?
Yeah, Richard Williams, councillor for Stannington.
Alan?
Alan Woodcock, councillor for East Ecclesfield Ward.
And last but not least, Gary.
Thanks, Chair. Councillor Gary Weatherall for Shea Green Brightside Ward.
Thank you very much. My name's Diane Hurst and I'm one of the co-chairs of the meeting. I'm a member for the Richmond Ward. Abby, do we have any apologies for absence?
Thank you, Chair. We've had apologies from councillor Bob McCann and councillor Barbara Masters is being substitute today.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is items, to identify items for the exclusion of public and press. I don't believe we have any such items on today's agenda. So I'll move straight on to declarations of interest. Do any members have a declaration to make? And I've got councillor Chris Rosling-Joseph indicating.
Yes, Chair. On the item seven, the tree preservation order is actually in my ward. And I have dealt with these particular trees as some casework, not into the fact that they're being preserved, but the fact that somebody wants them pruned rather than cut down. So I'll take advice from the legal if I can take part or not within it because I've already been involved with it as casework for constituents.
Do we have an opinion on that?
Thank you, Chair. In this instance, it's a case of whether you've already been involved is whether you've already predetermined the matter. So today you should be coming with an open mind. If you've already indicated a view on this, then I would recommend that the member should not take part.
Do you have an open mind, Chris?
Chair, yes, I do. I don't, I've read the report. I quite agree with the report. There are just some issues with it, absolutely.
So are you declaring an interest and not going to take part?
I'll not take, I'll not take part, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. So if we can record that fact in the minutes, please. The next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting. I need to bring two items to our notice here. So do, do, do members, will members approve this as, these minutes as a correct record?
Agreed, Chair.
Thank you. I have, I'd like to introduce two amendments. On 7c.3, we've got an error that Chloe Palmerington spoke in support of the development. And 8.5 councillor Homshaw noted the dismissal of an appeal against the delegated decision of the council. So with those two corrections, I'd like to submit there was an accurate record. I don't believe there are any matters arising. Site visit is the next item on the agenda and that is already in members' diaries for the Monday preceding the next planning meeting. And officers will advise when the items for the agenda that require a site visitor have been agreed. And we go on to the tree preservat, tree preservation order, item seven. So it's order number 443 of High Street, Baiton. And I can see that Sam's in the room, so if I hand the floor over to you or the mic over to you.
Sure, thank you. Right, yeah, so same as last month really, the TPO was served by Peter Simpson, who was covering the Post during the restructure. He's now left, so I'm here to confirm it, just talk you through it. We've received a request from a resident who should probably remain nameless. And he's basically saying that he's worried that the developer's just taken over the house on the end and he's going to take the trees down. So he's wanted, he's asked if we could inspect the trees in question and see if they warrant a TPO, which Peter's tempo assessment put up here. That's scored very highly on all counts. So score seventeen, definitely merits a TPO. Been outside last week, there was no health defects that I could spot. It's part of the original village structure of Baiton. And yeah, I asked that it be confirmed today, please. I haven't, I haven't got any printed pictures of the trees in question because I've been into the Houghton House to get, to use the printer. But the photos I'd emailed to the officers, the officers aren't in, so I've kind of just been left with just paperwork. Put it on my phone if you want to have a look.
I do believe we have a photograph in the pack, Sam.
All right, okay, cool.
And it's on page twenty-five. It's a long view of High Street.
I've not got any, I don't have the paper.
No, well, you're okay. No worries.
I've seen it, so yeah.
We've all, we've all been able to see a picture of the tree and I'm sure a lot of us are familiar with the High Street in Baiton, in any case. So yes, thank you very much for your report. We don't have anybody to speak on this. Have we got any member questions on this? Have we got any member comments? Nope. Right, then we'll proceed to the, to the vote, which is to confirm the tree preservation order number 443. So all those in favour, again, I'll go round the room. Peter Garbutt?
I'm in favour, thank you.
Brian? Pete, Pete Price?
Favour, Chair.
Tony Damm's?
In favour, Chair.
Zahira?
In favour, Chair.
Barbara?
In favour, Chair.
Andy?
Yeah, in favour, Chair.
Favour, Chair.
I make that a unanimous verdict. So thank you very much. Thank you for your time, Sam. Could I ask you to turn the microphone off when we go? Right, thank you very much. So the first item on the agenda, the first application under various acts at item number eight is application number 21/03193/rg3. And it's situated at land between Burleymore Avenue and Burley Lane and Newstead Road, Sheffield 12. I believe this is your report, Lucy, to present, so I'll hand over to you.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just do a very short introduction whilst we wait for the officer to come back to run the presentation. Just one point to note on the supplementary information on item number one. Just a minor amendment to condition twenty-five. It should have talked about lighting and that being provided in accordance with approved details. So it's highlighted in bold are the words that need to alter on condition twenty-five. And Chair, just running through the agenda before today, I realise that we'd, we'd mentioned that the sustainability measures would be covered by condition, but we'd failed to attach that condition. So obviously that needs an additional condition to cover the sustainability measures. I'll just give a very short introduction before we move on to the slide, Chair. The site is vacant open grassland following the demolition of the previous houses. I think that was about eighteen years ago now. Obviously, a lot of members went to visit the site yesterday, so they'll be familiar with it. And you recently approved the construction of forty-one dwellings and thirty-six flats immediately to the south of this site. The current proposal is for specialist older persons independent living accommodation in the form of one main large block to the north of the site and five smaller blocks to the, to the south, and that includes a special needs block in those five. The proposals also incorporate a community hall and café facilities as well as open space areas. And the scheme is a hundred percent affordable to be provided by the council. So if we could just move through the slides, if we just go to the title slide. And then if we just go to the next slide, the slide shows the red line boundary. And then the, the next slide shows the aerial photographs. So that shows the cleared site. And you can see the old footpaths and the road going through the centre there. The next slide shows photographs towards the site from Burleymore Avenue. So you can see it's relatively flat compared to the previous site to the south that you dealt with. The next slide shows photographs looking towards the site from Parkland Crescent, which is at the south. And you can just see the modern houses which have been constructed there, just, just to the south. The next slide shows photographs looking towards the site from Newstead Avenue. And then the following slide shows this proposed site layout. So what you can see on here is the main block to the north of Newstead Grove. Blocks A to E are to the south of Newstead Grove, so on the south of the site. And the special needs block A is the one on the east from Ting Newstead Road. There are substantial private community gardens, communal gardens, sorry, associated with each half of the site and that those would be privately available for the residents. And the slide also, also shows that the main tree groups fall outside the site and so will be retained. There will be the odd one inside the site that does need to come out, but there will be planting to replenish those. But the key tree groups that you will have seen on the site visit yesterday are to be retained. So those to the east and to the southwest corner, so those would be retained as part of the scheme. The next slide shows the elevations of the main block, which is to the north of the site. And that is three to four storeys in the main, but it is up to five storeys at key nodal points, which this site can accommodate, we feel, because of its position next to Burleymore Road and also the separation from existing properties around the site, which is quite substantial. The following slide shows an image of the key entrance to the main block from Burleymore Avenue. And then slides ten, sorry, ten to me. The next slide shows one of the key entrances from Newstead Grove, as does the following slide. And then the following slide after this shows the café entrance to the main block at the corner of Newstead Avenue and Newstead Grove. And then finally, the last slide shows the communal private open space between the blocks, the singular blocks that are to the south. So there's five blocks there that are to the south. Chair, I think, I don't need to go into any more detail, I don't think. Obviously, this is a very welcome scheme. I think we only had one representation in total from all surrounding residents. It's much needed, older persons independent living accommodation. So we welcome the proposal, Chair.
Thank you, Lucy. We don't have any speakers on this application, so I will open the floor up to members' questions. Councillor Sanger?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I suppose it's, it's sort of picking up the additional condition in terms of the energy statement. And I suppose that's sort of related to the, the representation about policy CS sixty-five. And really, in terms of what we want in terms of heating systems, you know, clearly we welcome what it says on, on, on the report. I was reading that on page, page fifty-four about the insulation levels. But in terms of the heating and the use of gas boilers, were there, were any other option, what other options were looked at? And what else could have been used to heat these buildings?
Chair, I mean, in planning terms, we can't insist on specific types of energy supply. Obviously, in the sustainability credentials are covered in detail on page fifty-four, at the bottom of page fifty-four. So they will be high efficiency boilers, but the, there'll be high levels of insulation, a fabric-first approach. There'll be future proofing in terms of being, being able to put photovoltaic panels on the roofs because obviously they are flat roof structures, but also they're weighting, the, the structure allows them to be put on in future. But clearly there are cost implications as a result of that, but it would allow that in, in the future to be even more sustainable. But in terms of the policy, there's a reduction in energy consumption of fourteen point eight percent for the apartments and for the non-domestic old persons block, twenty-one point five percent for the complex needs block. So it's much greater than, than the ten percent. And as I say, with this some future proofing in relation to being able to accommodate future energy needs on the roofs as well. But we can't comment specifically, other than they are high, high energy efficiency boilers. But I accept your point that there's, you know, other things could have been looked at.
Yes, yeah, thanks, Chair. I mean, I'll, I'll come back with, with comments later.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Homshaw indicating.
My question is to do also with energy, but it's in terms of heat retention and, if possible, recycling, which so in my, in my opinion, there's not much point in putting in the high efficiency boilers if you're not going to retain the heat in the first place and you're losing it throughout the building. And that would seem to me to really need to be improved.
Lucy?
I'm not sure there was a question in that, Chair.
Yes, there was. It was a question at the end. It would seem to be need to be improved. Is that the case? That it could, sorry, I'll rephrase it then. Is, is there a possibility that it could be improved and should have been improved in the application?
Chair, no. I mean, in planning policy terms, it more than exceeds the policy requirements. And obviously, there's a fabric-first approach. So in terms of making sure that the buildings themselves are energy efficient from the start. And obviously, there are substantial building regulations requirements as well. So, so the use of energy will be much less because they're very highly insulated buildings.
Brian, is that?
Yeah, it's fine, thank you.
I don't have anybody else indicating, so I shall pass over to members' comments. Councillor Sanger?
Yes, yes, Chair. I mean, I mean, clearly I welcome, welcome the scheme. Independent living for older people is something the council supported for a long time. Finding sites is difficult. This is a site which is the right sort of site and the scheme, the policy of the scheme looks, 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 looks very good. So really welcome that. As I say, I was, I was on the Cabinet in two thousand and two when we, when we cleared this site. So I'm very pleased it's been reused for housing. So really welcoming it. But I'd say my concern is, we have set, and it's clearly wider than we can do it on, on planning committee. But we, we've set as a city net zero by twenty thirty and that, that clearly means that we should be looking at, at schemes that are, are, are net zero. And large housing schemes like this do lend themselves to renewable energy solutions. And I hear what we say about we can retrofit solar panels, we can think about ground source heat pumps at other points. But it is just frustrating that at this point, we're still fitting gas boilers, knowing that as a city, we will have to rip them out within eight to nine years. So slightly frustrated, but overall, it's a very good scheme. I'm sure it'd be, very welcome it in the area. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I've also got councillor Price.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with councillor Sanger. I fully support this, Chair. And as an older person, I fully welcome the move to more older persons independent living buildings. I think it's, it's, it's an excellent development. I'm surprised you're not opposition because it's a lovely green space. But clearly, those of us who remember the old Vic Alum houses, that used to be home there, were a nightmare. So it's a nice improvement and I think it's, it's, it's a good, good development and fully support it, Chair.
Thank you. I've also got councillor Garbutt.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I shall be supporting this. I fully agree with councillor Sanger on the, the way that national legislation doesn't allow us to insist on much more stringent measures to combat climate change through either better insulation or renewable energy sources. I'm aware that that's, you know, that they've already gone past what's the minimum that, that is required. I'm just very frustrated that with every, everything that comes up and every month that goes by, that's opportunities lost to reduce carbon emissions. So I just want that put on record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Garbutt. And I've also got councillor Davidson.
Thank you. Yes, I think it's, it's a good development on, on a site that has had planning permission. And the, the only thing I would say is what the others have already said about the, the problem of, of heat retention and the fact that we're still using gas. However, the gas is, is far more efficient now than it was even ten years ago. So the boilers, I should say, are, the gas boilers are much more efficient than they were ten years ago. I also am pleased that, that there is provision for putting up the solar panels. I just hope that the council, as council, our council, the council is the landlord, will, will put money aside in the intervening years so that we can get a proper conversion to different forms of energy. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I've also got councillor Homshaw.
Thank you. I'm going to be supporting this, this application. There are one or two really good features of it. The community hall is, is an excellent idea. I'd like to see that in other community, sorry, community halls in other large scale residential developments. Also, I noticed that an open space assessment has been carried out. And I didn't know this was a, a regular thing, so I'll be working out for that in other applications.
Thank you, councillor. I can see no more indications. Take the opportunity myself to say how much I welcome this development. Council-owned, council-run, and if it's anything as popular and as the extra care site in, in Woodhouses, it will prove to be a very good addition to the local community. So I would, I would welcome it very much. It's also a highly sustainable location. So thank you for bringing this proposal forwards. I'll go round the room now. And the application, the recommendation is to grant conditionally for the reasons set out in the report. So councillor Garbutt?
Yes, I'll go with the councillor, with the officer's recommendation.
Councillor Homshaw?
I support the officer's recommendation.
Councillor Rosling-Joseph?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Price?
Support the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Damm?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Nas?
For, Chair.
Councillor Masters?
Support the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Sanger?
For the officer's recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Davidson?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Williams?
For the recommendation, Chair. For the recommendation, Chair.
And councillor Weatherall, thank you. It's like a little hitch. IT-driven. Bear with us just one moment.
Yeah, but, yeah, you can't mute me. For the recommendations, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. I make that unanimous. Thank you very much. The next application we have, let me find my piece of paper. We have two applications for this site. Lucy, are we taking both applications together but the votes separately?
Chair, that's right. The, the full application, the first application, which is where the officer report is, is the larger site area. So that includes the demolition behind the facade of the former pub and Chubbies. Whereas the second application is limited to alterations to the listed building, which is Leah's Yard. So that's why we've put the report on the first one, but it's a joint report, but you do have to vote separately because they are different schemes.
Lovely. Right, so we're taking these, the, the report linked to application number twenty-one stroke zero three 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 four stroke rg3. And that's on the side of Henry, Leah and Sons, twenty-four to twenty-six Cambridge Street. So if I hand over to you, Lucy, for the report?
Thank you, Chair. I'll keep my report relatively brief because I do understand that you've got speakers both for and against. Just one point of clarification. Thank you to councillor Garbutt for picking this up. So on the supplementary report, number two, that we've noted a couple of errors in terms of the numbers on Cambridge Street. So page seventy-four and page eighty-two have both got some minor alterations to, to make it clear that the reference should be to twenty-four to twenty-six Cambridge Street in both cases. So thank you for picking that up. Chair, to be clear to members, obviously whilst this is a joint report, the full planning application covers both Leah's Yard and twenty-four to twenty-six Cambridge Street, whilst the listed building application consists of relatively minor works to Leah's Yard only. This is because planning and listed building approvals given last year dealt with stabilisation, repairs and shopfront alterations to Leah's Yard, which are well underway on-site and nearing a conclusion. The proposals include the reuse of Leah's Yard for thirty-seven separate units, offering flexible space for business, including ground floor, retail, food and drink and office use. In addition, all but the facade of twenty-four to twenty-six Cambridge Street would be demolished and a new structure would be built behind it. Finally, a new building would be constructed to the south of twenty-four to twenty-six Cambridge Street, fronting on to the newly, newly formed Albert Walk. The most controversial aspect of the proposal is to demolish the rear of the non-designated heritage asset of twenty-four to twenty-six Cambridge Street. This is covered in detail in the report and is required due to structural wall locations, low head heights, level changes between units, non-compliant stairs and weak floors. In your officers and historic England's view, the less than substantial harm is outweighed by the substantial public benefits, which in this case are to create a unique destination, to secure the future of heritage assets at risk. The economic benefits of the scheme, which are obviously wider than just this site, they relate to the, the whole heart of the city scheme. Clearly, creating inclusive access is really important across the scheme. There would be high quality public realm. And as I say, the main thing is integrating it with the heart of the city scheme. So if I move on to the presentation, obviously that's just the title slide for the first application. The next slide is the title slide for the listed building application, which describes those works. The third slide shows the extent of the site area. And then the next slide shows the same in aerial context. Slide five shows a photograph of the back of Leah's Yard as it was from Backfield. And slide six shows the view of the site frontage from Cambridge Street. The adjoining building to Chubbies to the left of that, that's already been demolished as part of a previous approval. So just to be clear, that, members will have noticed that on the site visit yesterday. The next slide shows the existing and front and rear elevations, as you would have seen them yesterday on the site visit. The next slide shows the proposed front and rear elevations with the new block to the left of the top image. So that's the brand new block to the left there. The next slide shows the sections through the proposed floors of the new building behind the retained facade of 24 to 26 Cambridge Street. And it also shows more detail of the front elevation of that building. The next slide shows the proposed elevation from the newly formed Albert Walk. So the left side is where Leah's Yard is and the right side is the new building. And that's because Leah's Yard wraps around the back of that site. The next slide shows the proposed alterations to Leah's Yard itself. And those are highlighted in red. So you can see that they're quite minor in extent, largely limited to external stairs and openings and to improve access by lifting the floors on the ground floor. Those are covered in detail on page 75 of the report. So that shows the extent of the alterations to Leah's Yard. And as I say, in this case, because most of the works were already approved as part of a previous consent, work is well underway on the other elements already on site. The next slide shows the ground floor uses. That shows the extent of the intimate spaces to be retained as part of Leah's Yard in particular. So that starts to explain why there are so many units in that particular element of the scheme. The following slide shows the wider context, both to the front of the site, on to Cambridge Street, to the side of the site, on to Albert Walk, and also to the rear, on to Backfield. So that's just to show it in the wider context and to show that obviously this is quite diminutive in scale, really, in comparison to some of the approvals that have been given for the rest of the heart of the city and that you can see emerging from the ground at the moment. The following series of computer generated images. The first one shows the front of the site on to Cambridge Street with the new building clearly to the left hand side. The next one shows a glimpse of what Leah's Yard could look like once it's recreated and is in habitation with all the new businesses. The following slide shows the southern elevation and that's looking along Albert Walk towards, back towards Cambridge Street. And that would be from Linley Square, which is the new space that you've already approved behind this scheme. And then the final slide shows in more detail the proposed new shopfronts, partly to the new block to the left and to the former Chubbies to the right. Chair, I think I will leave the presentation there, as I say, because I do understand that you've got speakers both for and against. And I'm sure there'll be questions after the event.
Okay, thank you very much, Lucy. Now we're going to have a little bit of hiatus. I've got two speakers against the application. Claire, the first one is Robin Hughes. So if you could go and ask Mr Hughes into the room, into the chamber. Thank you. Welcome to the Planning and Highways Committee, Mr Hughes. And I can see you've been told how to operate the speaker. So make yourself comfortably, make yourself comfortable. God, my brain's, my head really is a shed today. Make yourself comfortable and the floor is yours. You have up to five minutes.
Thank you very much, Chair. So in 1863, James Morton greatly expanded and rebuilt his Culpit Lane Hornworks, which today we know as Leah's Yard, extending it to Backfield and on to land behind the tiny Sportsman pub. And at Horn, it was much used for knife handles and the street was the centre of the trade at the time. Now, at the same time, the pub we see today, more recently known as the Tap and Tanker and Chubbies, was also built bigger and better with a fine clubroom to accommodate increasing worker and union activism and social life. Sheffield pubs were integral to our world famous industries. The work was dusty, causing respiratory illness and intensely hot, causing dehydration. Water lacked essential mineral content and might be unwholesome. So thirst was slaked with beer. Beer is as much part of the Sheffield story as coal or crucibles, but few examples remain of a factory and its pub surviving together. With Leah's Yard, we have a factory and a pub built together at the same time, on the same plot. The only such building is known to be still standing in Sheffield. So this is not a plea to save an old pub. It's a plea to save Leah's Yard itself. As a collection of little masters workshops, it is rare. As a hornworks, it is rarer still. But the Leah's Yard pub makes it unique. These applications are made by the council. And if the plan relating to the Sportsman pub is sent back, there's no doubt it will be modified and a much better scheme will emerge that makes the most of this site and its unique and irreplaceable Sheffield character. Leah's Yard itself is already refurbished, as we've heard, and is safe. So we now need to follow through and not spoil what's been achieved so far. We are happy with what's proposed for the industrial buildings. Look forward to seeing them come alive again. The new build outside the main pub footprint is entirely acceptable. But the demolition of the pub denies us a golden opportunity and so it is not. By law, as the setting of a listed building, the Leah's Yard pub has equal protection with Leah's Yard itself, the council, both as developer and planning authority is legally bound to give priority to preserving this setting, which contributes to the significance of the industrial buildings of Leah's Yard, but will be almost completely lost. Now, the law also requires a rigorous assessment of alternatives. Reusing this building requires similar work to any historic building and less than has already been done for Leah's Yard itself. The design team admit their design was not informed by the pub's history and their case for demolition is flawed. Ramps are specified rather than the minor floor level adjustments, which are being made on a much more significant scale in Leah's Yard. Floor loadings are questioned when entire floors have been replaced in Leah's Yard. A new roof may be needed, as in Leah's Yard, but must apparently also be enlarged to achieve a 1% increase in floor space. Most unreasonable of all, they propose new staircases only in the new buildings outside the pub footprint. But if the pub is kept, they insist on putting the same stairs inside it, destroying the interior. Spaces with historic character attract the most enterprising businesses and make the most exciting destinations, but supply is small and it's decreasing. Substantial investments in the reopening of the Matilda Tavern and the Three Cranes show great confidence in the viability of pubs. Retaining a traditional pub character makes this scheme more viable, not less. Heritage is not in competition with benefit here. Heritage is the whole of what Leah's Yard and its pub have to offer. Demolishing buildings also squanders their embodied carbon. New build uses scarce, carbon hungry natural resources and government policy highlights this. As do the Royal Institute of British Architects, the Royal Academy of Engineering and the University of Sheffield and others, who say reuse should be the first option, demolition the last. The council has declared a climate emergency and should be leading the way. Listed building consent for Leah's Yard industrial buildings is not contested. If the committee sees fit, however, to refuse the related application to demolish the Sportsman on the grounds that a feasible alternative exists that does less harm or to defer the decision, that does not jeopardise Leah's Yard, which is already, as we've heard, secured. A short delay creates the chance to think again, to reap all the same benefits and add to them, to keep and celebrate that special character that only Sheffield has and which it must keep if we are to succeed. Our historic buildings are precious because they tell us about people. The history of this great city is as much about our people as it is about industry. We value our industrial buildings because, like Leah's Yard, they are a record of people's trades. What is uniquely special about Leah's Yard and its pub is that they are a record of people's lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Hughes. We, Mr Hughes, if I could ask you to turn your microphone off? Thank you. We now have a second speaker. So if we could trade places, please, and bring councillor Robben. Thank you. If you'd like to give your contribution, please, Mike. The floor is yours for up to five minutes.
Thank you, Chair. I'm speaking today in my capacity as Sheffield City Council Heritage Champion. I think Mr Hughes has probably spoken much more eloquently than I could on the technical aspects of this application. So I think I propose to speak regarding the significance of this building to our city. I think we all know that in the future, cities will need to be distinctive in order to flourish. Why would someone come and live or invest in Sheffield, for instance, rather than Leeds or Manchester or London or any other city that's striving to create a future for itself? You know, aside from being the outdoor city, I think the thing that makes Sheffield distinctive is our industrial heritage. I think it's vital then that we do everything that we can to ensure that this heritage is represented in a way that normally echoes our great past but is as ambitious as possible in creating a future. I think the plans for Leah's Yard itself certainly fit this. It promises to be a distinctive, authentic, exciting development. You know, a reason for people to come to Sheffield and I certainly commend the developers on that. I think sadly, the same can't be said for the site that was most recently the Tap and Tanker that people like me will know as the Sportsman. Look, everybody acknowledges that that site has to be modernised, the heart of the city too. But, you know, I'm afraid to me, this seems to be a pretty uninspiring development that pays very little recognition to the historical significance of the building. Simply retaining aspects of the facade is, well, it's a facade, isn't it? You know, given this site in intrinsic connection to Leah's Yard, I fear that the provision of another bland food and drink unit would detract from that excellent development. Remember, this site was constructed to serve Leah's Yard, as has already been detailed. You know, is it too much to ask that this new development does the same and in a way that provides something truly distinctive? Since the present proposals do not do this, I think a new design is needed. One which retains more original features, including that integral first floor clubroom, which, you know, I'm sure many of you will know, was an early site of organised labour in Sheffield. This is a site of real historical significance that we should use to augment Leah's Yard, not to clear out and gut and replace with something new. So I ask that this committee challenges the developers to think again, to ask them to come back with a new proposal which matches the one for Leah's Yard in imagination and ambition. Leah's Yard is an example of our city's regeneration that fully acknowledges our distinctive heritage. Let's ensure that its sister development enhances it by doing the same. Thank you, committee. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you councillor. And now we have a speaker in favour of the application. And that could either be Claire Camp or James O'Hara? James O'Hara, thank you. Thank you very much. Welcome to the meeting, Mr O'Hara. Make yourself comfortable and when your mic's ready to go, the floor is yours for up to five minutes.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. The history and the heritage of Leah's Yard was one of the main reasons we tendered for this opportunity. As someone born and bred in the city and whose dad started working at Brown Banners at the age of 15, making Sheffield steel cutlery, getting the opportunity to do something so steep to our history is a real honour. But given the building has been vacant for 20 odd years, it's really important that whilst we respect its history and heritage, we make this building work for Sheffield's future. It's all about taking a building that is currently not fit for purpose and giving it a new life. I think the proposed scheme does this really well and brings the life of Leah's into the 21st century and beyond. The new build block, for example, houses all the things that make it possible for Leah's Yard to exist as a home for business in this century, not the last. The new block allows the preservation of the old block, the two things are symbiotic. I'm aware that the pub, which it's worth reminding everyone, isn't a listed building, has been an element that has garnered a lot of passionate opinions. I'm incredibly passionate about pubs. I own six in the city and I love contributing to Sheffield's night time economy and culture. But the fact is, the current interior of the pub isn't fit for modern use. As a licensee myself, I would not feel comfortable having patrons using the stairs, for example. From a health and safety point of view, it's a nightmare. And this is coming from someone who opened a bar in a bog next door. I've already developed two listed buildings in this city and made them thriving businesses. So I like to think I know what I'm talking about in this area. Drinking habits and the nature of pubs have changed a huge amount over the last 10 years, never mind the last 100. The current footprint of the pub makes it very, very difficult for it to make sense as a modern business in a modern city centre. And I know this more than most. A much better use is what is being proposed. We keep the frontage, we make the insides bigger, the business going in there is still going to be a licensed premise and what we have is something that's fit for purpose for the next 100 years. I would just like to say that myself and my business partner, Tom, cannot wait to get started. We've got 37 units to fill in Leah's Yard and currently we've got 96 active inquiries from a range of amazing Sheffield based independent businesses. Demand and interest has been unbelievable and genuinely humbling. It's clear to me that if we are given the opportunity, we will make this formally derelict building the beating heart of the heart of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr O'Hara. Lucy, I'm going to hand the floor back to you now. Is there anything you would like to say in response to the speakers?
Chair, I think most of the items that were discussed by the speakers against that, we have covered in detail in the report. And obviously, we understand the and obviously we understand the strong feelings that people have got in relation to the pub and the former Chubbys building, so we certainly understand that. But what we've done in terms of the report is on page 85, we've set out the clear and convincing justification, and it isn't just city council officers that have reviewed this. Obviously, it's Historic England. Historic England are incredibly positive about this particular application, which, bearing in mind the last committee where we had two very quite negative responses from Historic England, shows that the applicants and ourselves have been working together with Historic England to develop a scheme which is long-lasting, fit for purpose, and does give Leah's Yard a lasting legacy. So what you have to do in terms of, you look at the clear and convincing justification, and you also have to look at the public benefits of the scheme, and that's quite clearly set out in the National Planning Policy Framework. And in this specific case, the public benefits are incredibly extensive. As Mr O'Hara was saying, one of the other things that happens is because you're constructing a new building at the back of the facades, it means that you can get the back of house facilities for the rest of Leah's Yard into that space as well, which is important. So we obviously accept that drinking and working establishments went hand in hand in Sheffield. That goes without question. Clearly, there's a requirement for archaeological assessment. It would be required to be documented. And there are also proposed to be interpretive information on the site to document all of that history because clearly it is really important, there's absolutely no denying that. But with all those safeguards in place, we still consider that this is the right scheme for this site. It's well balanced and it is really important to get this, you know, it really will be the heart of the city and a unique destination. So we think there's clear and convincing justification, and the public benefits far outweigh the negatives of the scheme in this case.
Thank you, Lucy. Right, I shall open up for members' questions now. Councillor Davison?
Yes, excuse me. Yes, one of the things that was happening when the tap and tanker was in operation was that next door, where the Leah's Yard is, there was a continuous scaffolding up which was hiding that particular pub, and the business suffered as a result of that. Now, can we guarantee that no one will suffer adverse trading conditions when the work begins on Leah's Yard if it is passed? Thank you.
Chair, that's not particularly a planning consideration, I have to say. But obviously, the scheme is hand in hand with Leah's Yard, so I think the scaffolding has mainly come down off Leah's Yard anyway now, but the two go hand in hand. But it's not actually a planning consideration. Disruption from construction is covered in terms of environmental issues, in terms of dust and so on, but not the specific commercial interests. But obviously, the city centre management team do take on board comments from businesses and so on, and they sometimes do what they can to make sure there's no detriment. But it's not a planning consideration for this committee.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Price indicating.
Thanks, Chair. During the visit yesterday, I noticed in the front lounge, there's a wonderful Victorian fireplace. I was wondering, is there any chance of us asking for that to be preserved as part of the new development? It's on the wall, it's not going to be touched, and it's got all the features there. All of us commented on how wonderful it was, and I presume some scrapman will come and buy it eventually. But it just seems to me to be a shame to lose that fireplace if there's any chance of saving it. Chair, thank you.
Chair, I mean, I think you could, members could certainly add an informative to the effect that they would very much welcome that to be part of any scheme if it was to be approved. Obviously, we haven't got the go-ahead from the applicant to require that, but I can't see why that would be a problem. But yeah, an informative would request best endeavours, for example.
I would like that, Chair, after the decision, that we do request that they perhaps try to preserve that bit of the old pub.
Thank you, Peter. We'll have a discussion and then we'll come back to that then. I've got Brian Homshaw indicating next.
Yes, it's a question in connection to Historic England. And so I understand that Historic England have added the Leah's Yard to the Heritage at Risk register last week. But what I don't quite get, and I'm a bit concerned about, is have Historic England made a site visit? Have they visited and are they aware of the connection, which has been explained earlier today, between Leah's Yard, the working site, and the pub next door? So does anyone, can anyone explain that or enlighten me on that one?
Okay, thank you, councillor Homshaw. If you'd like, thank you. Lucy, or the floor is yours?
Chair, in terms of the Heritage at Risk register, that Leah's Yard has been on that register for a long time, but it is about to come off it. That's what's going to happen. It's about, because the works to stabilise it have nearly been completed, so those works will take that building off the Heritage at Risk register, which is fantastic news. But it's been on that register for a long, long time. Chair, in terms of have they ever visited the site? Yes, they have several times, and obviously they see all the documentation that we do in terms of any archaeological information, et cetera. So they will be fully aware. They've done big studies on Sheffield's metal trades industries before, so they know the connection between workplaces and drinking establishments, so that, yes, they will be aware of that.
Okay, thank you. I've also got councillor Masters indicating.
Yeah, I read the report. I've forgotten which department it was from, but basically, none of the fireplaces were original, which was rather disappointing. So whether that's true or not, I don't know, but it was a lovely fireplace and it should be preserved. But I did notice that sort of, sorry, I always get my names bundled up. The Hallamshire Society do suggest that at least the clubroom be maintained upstairs. I mean, I was rather surprised about how little original features were left downstairs. But upstairs, it seemed such a prominent feature, and it didn't seem to have been altered. Is it possible to put conditions on so that at least sections of it are preserved? And I do understand why it would be easier to demolish all behind the facade. But, yeah, I do think that we've seen some excellent examples of the way that bits of history have been preserved. So I'm just asking, is there any way of putting conditions on to preserve particular sections of it or not, as suggested in the report or requested in the report?
Chair, not with the scheme that's in front of you, because it does involve just the retention of the facade to those particular elements of the scheme, so that isn't in front of you at the moment. Obviously, archaeological work will require the building to be recorded and for a record to be made public, and also there would be interpretation on the site of what was on the site. But in answer to your question, you wouldn't be able to condition that because actually this scheme involves the removal of all the fabric behind the facade, so that includes the ruins.
So it's all or nothing, effectively? Yeah, thank you.
I've got councillor Dan indicating.
No, I was just going to say a similar thing, that if the fireplace could be maintained as a feature, I think the licensee would be very silly to remove it. But to correct councillor Price, it wouldn't be a scrapman that painted it. It would be somebody that sold it at a great profit.
Well, I don't, that's a question to answer, but I had, when Peter did make that suggestion for an informative? Yeah. I could see nods around there, and so we will return to that when we finish with questions and before we get to the vote. So I've got councillor Garb indicating.
Thank you, Chair. My question's about the work that's been done on Leah's Yard to try and preserve as much as possible of that. I understand that Leah's Yard is grade II listed and that the pub isn't listed. How much work has been done to, has it been done to the same extent to try and preserve a lot more of the adjoining public house? My concern is that this is just another in a long line of heritage buildings that we seem to be losing or not preserving to the highest extent. And Sheffield has a lot of heritage, and we need to be able to market the city, I suppose, on that heritage. And every time we lose something, it damages that possibility. So my question is, to what extent was work done to try and sort out a solution to keeping as much as possible of that heritage in the pub as was done in Leah's Yard?
Chair, in national policy terms, Leah's Yard is actually grade II star listed, so it's one of the top 6% in the country. So we have to go to huge endeavours to save and preserve that particular building. Less so, the legislation has a lower test for the building next door. But as we said on page 85 of the report, both ourselves and Historic England did go back to the applicants to ask them to do everything they could to review that and to review 24 to 26 Cambridge Street and whether that could be, more of that could be preserved. So, and obviously they came back with further justification, and that is the basis for the report that we've given you. But yes, we certainly did, as officers and Historic England, ask for that to be reviewed before this final scheme that came before you.
And the final indication I have is from councillor Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Question really, regarding the facade, when we were there yesterday, it was quite apparent that by keeping the facade, that will really keep the character. But I'm looking at one of the pictures which was in a presentation, figure 2.711, and it doesn't look at all like what I expected it to be, facade was to be kept. And I just wonder, can we ask the applicant or instruct the applicant to make what is left more like what it is now? Particularly the windows on the ground floor are quite different. Whereas if you look around Leah's Yard, the small panel windows are quite prevalent. Thank you.
Lucy?
Chair, do you want to scroll back, sorry, on the slide presentation to the one that shows the full extent of Cambridge Street? One again, next one, that one, yes. So at the minute, if you remember from the photographs, Chubbys has got, is adorned with some kind of timber faux facade at the moment, so it would involve the removal of that. So in terms of the upper floors, that would be restored to the original red brick appearance. On the ground floor, obviously we've had several discussions about the nature of the shop fronts, but to our mind, they are quite traditional shop fronts that are proposed. Obviously, the modern building to the left is completely different, but we think it'll still have the essence of what used to be there, and it will certainly be a dramatic improvement over what's on Cambridge Street at the moment in terms of the wider city centre conservation area. But we are attaching a series of conditions in terms of the exact material schedule, the exact specification, making sure the window reveal depths are the same as they were historically. So that is captured in the conditions. We do try our hardest to make sure the details in the end are the best they can be.
Thank you.
Okay. I have no more people indicating. So I think now is the time to, before we go for comments, we... Oh. Oh, sorry, sorry, councillor Weatherall.
No, I put my hand up because I thought your next words were going to be for comments, but then you said before we go to comments, so I'll leave it to you, Chair.
You're first on the list for comments then. I just wanted to settle the matter of the informative. Peter suggested, and it seems like, councillor, I'll be formal here. Councillor Price suggested, and councillor Dan, it seems, indicated that we should have an informative in there requesting the applicant to make his best endeavours to retain that Victorian fireplace that was in the front room of the public house.
Sorry, I thought, Chair, that we'd have to wait until we'd actually support, either supported or not, the application. I mean, it could be kicked out, actually.
I'll be advised by our legal advice on that. Okay.
If members want to vote now on including that informative, then the vote can go ahead with the informative on. Whether members want to support or refuse the application, I presume wouldn't be altered by the inclusion of that informative.
Okay. Roger?
Thank you. If by chance he wasn't interested in keeping that, would he make sure that the first choice went to the Industrial Museum?
Chair, obviously, in an informative, members can choose what they wish to do. So I think what you're saying is that you want to make best endeavours that it's repurposed within the ground floor of the new venture. And if that can't be achieved, then you would very much like it to be offered to the museum's trust. I mean, obviously, an informative doesn't have any standing, but knowing the applicants, I'm sure they'll do their very best to secure it in the ground floor of the building. I see no reason why they wouldn't do that, but...
Right, I've got two more speakers on this. The first is councillor Homshaw, and then we come to councillor Dan.
So I would just like to check whether this is an original feature or not, and it sounds like from the planners that it isn't. I wouldn't really want to put a mock Victorian fireplace in, put that on to a developer.
Okay. Councillor Dan?
As a director of the museums, I think we ought to let the museum look at it before we ask them to take it. I'd rather it stay where it was and added characters to the pub or whatever. But I'm not sure the museum would want it.
I'm going to come back to you, Lucy. Do we know if the fireplaces that are in those premises are original? We do know that the layout has been affected.
Chair, I don't know for certain, is the honest answer. I personally don't know for certain. I think just in terms of listening to members' views, there's a few different views. So I think you're probably safest to vote on whether, in the first instance, you want best endeavours to retain it somewhere within that ground floor of the new building. I think that's probably the safest option.
I think we'll do that, and then if we get permission for the informative, we'll include that in the vote when we come to the vote on Leah's Yard, if that's okay. So all those in favour of an informative to make best endeavours to retain, and we'll take it just on a show of hands? I can see that that's unanimous, so we will amend that when we come to the vote. I'll take comments now, if anyone would like to make a comment. Councillor Weatherall?
Thank you, Chair. Lucy, I'm glad I'm saying it to you than actually sending you an email because I know you'll be very thorough and send me a three or four page back like you usually do. But it's just a very quick one. For the last few times I've been here in this area, it's never come up as a, I'm going to say this wrong anyway, invitation board, where it's, there's a board that tells, you know, a freestanding board can be put in a certain area, saying what this yard used to be, you know, years ago. So when some people round to town, come along and see it, they would see that. And I'm all in favour of that, Chair, as it's all been voted with calomile in seconding it, so the fireplace.
Okay, thank you, councillor Weatherall. And I've got councillor Price.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be honest, when I first heard of the demolishing this pub in Chubbys, I went, no, no, no! And fully intended to try to oppose it, but having read the report and having been to visit it, I am very excited about what is happening. I have fond memories of in Chubbys in the early hours of the morning and in the Sportsman's Inn. And I felt, but looking at it today, I went in and it really is virtually impossible, I guess, to adapt that pub to modern standards. It's very uneven, it's different road, the stairs are very dangerous. Apart from the fireplace, I thought, oh, why would I want to preserve this? It's not adaptable, I don't think, to modern standards. I think the proposal to the...
I think the proposal to the Leah's Yard is superb, I think it's exciting. In fact, I think the frontage, saving the frontage is ideal because it fits in well with the rest of divisions, with the rest of Cambridge Street. It makes it look nice with the buildings above. I think it's an exciting development and I support Mr Hallara when he said it could become the centre of the city centre, really. That yard and the new layout for the pub, I think would be very attractive and I'm fully supporting the recommendation now, Chair.
Thank you councillor. The next indication I've got of a comment is from councillor Sanga.
Thanks, Chair. I mean, I found this one really difficult and I listened intensely to what Robin Hughes and councillor Drabell said, and I thought they made really good, a really good case in terms of the history and the, how few Little Mester's sites we've got and the integrity of a pub to a Little Mester's workshop. But like councillor Price, I mean, the visit to me was what was so important because you're going to have to convince me that that 1863 interior of that pub has not been touched. I don't think you can convince me from the site visit. I think the reality is, it's had several refurbishments over the years and then, as we've heard, it's been, the building's been empty for the last 20 years. And I just think this is an exciting scheme. Leah's Yard is going to be protected, whatever, but in terms of the scheme that's before us, I think it does balance the history of the site, the heritage of the site, keeping the developments, you know, free stories, so it's keeping it in scale of what was there so people can get a reflection of where Sheffield came from, where Cambridge Streets came from. And I think everything, yeah, looking at everything in the round, I come to the same conclusion as Historic England, that this is as good as we're going to get and it's going to be a good focal point for the new art of the city. So I'll be supporting it, Chair.
Thank you councillor. I've got councillor Dams indicating.
Well, I'd rather we saw that the developer left the fireplace where it was because people would see it to be part of the city. If we asked the museums if they want it, they might say, oh, yeah, we'll have that, we might come in handy, and then it's in a back room somewhere and nobody sees it. So I really hope that we can ask the landlord very nicely if they'll leave it where it is as a feature.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I've also got councillor Davison. Tony?
Chair, yeah, it's a very interesting development and I do have sympathy for what councillor Drabell has said. The problem with this building is, it isn't as exciting a piece of architecture as you would find in other parts of the city or indeed in other cities. And I also accept that cities' characters are defined by the uniqueness of the architecture of a place. Now, in this case, the façade, whether you like it or not, is being retained. And I think that, although I'm sorry to see that the pub is changing direction, but nevertheless, I think I would agree with what others have said about the difficulties of the old pub. After all, I was in a theatre in London where four, I think theatres have been on that same site in the last 500 years, so things do change as well and often for the better. And I think in this particular case, I think the development is better than what is there at the moment. Thank you.
I'll vote for it.
Thank you councillor Davison. And the last indication I've got is from councillor Homshaw.
Thank you. There are a number of things that don't work for me about the application. The join between the new and the old does not work, I think it's out of scale and the shape is wrong. The view from Linley Square, I think it's called, doesn't really do justice to the buildings. For me, that end building, that new build, looks like a three-storey residential townhouse that's on the end of a Georgian terrace. So that does not work at all for me. The Independent Conservation Advisory Group, SCAG, said that the treatment of 24 Cambridge Street is inappropriate, there's no traditional shop frontage, and the use of modern brick is unacceptable. And I have to agree with them there, we should not be perpetuating some of the mistakes of the 1970s and 1980s. They go on to say that façadism does not equate to conservation, page 16 to 17. We should be improving, this is my opinion, we should be improving the look of the street by improving its buildings, including the interiors and the frontages. I don't think there's any argument about Leah's Yard, I think it's a massive improvement because it's been left derelict for so long, but we should also be improving the setting of Leah's Yard and associated buildings. So I will be voting against the application on those grounds.
Thank you very much. Right, now I'm intending to move to the vote on application 21/03334RG3, which is a partial demolition excluding façade retention and erection of a three-storey building and redevelopment of 24-26 Cambridge Street to form a mixed-use development together with 22-22 Cambridge Street, Layer's Yard. And this will include the informative, if we vote for this. So I shall go round the room, asking if you support the officer's recommendation, which is to grant conditionally. Councillor Garbutt?
Can I have clarification before I cast my vote, because there is going to be another vote straight after this? Can I have clarification for what that vote will be for?
This vote is for the demolition and the building works. The next vote will be listed building consent for Layer's Yard.
Thank you, Chair. In that case, for this one, I'm going to be voting against the officer's recommendation.
Councillor Homshaw?
I will be voting against the officer's recommendation for this one.
Councillor Ossing-Josephs?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Price?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Dams?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Nas?
For, Chair.
Councillor Masters?
For, Chair.
Councillor Sanga?
For the officer's recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Davison?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Williams?
I'm going to abstain, Chair.
Councillor Woodcock?
For the recommendation, Chair.
And councillor Weatherall?
For the recommendation, Chair.
I'll have a chance to have a quick count, but I think that is carried. So 9-4, yeah, okay, thank you. So now we're going to go straight on to case number 21/03335/LBCRG3. That's the listed building consent for works to Layer's Yard. And the officer's recommendation is to grant conditionally. So I shall be going round the room again, asking if members support the listed building consent, the officer recommendation. Councillor Garbutt?
Thank you, Chair. I shall be voting for this.
Councillor Homshaw?
I shall be voting for the officer's recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Ossing-Josephs?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Price?
For, Chair.
For, Chair.
For, Chair. Councillor Sanga?
For the officer's recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Davison?
For the officer's recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Williamson?
I'll support the officer's recommendation.
Councillor Woodcraft?
For the officer's recommendations, Chair.
Councillor Weatherall?
For the recommendation, Chair.
I make that unanimous, Abbie? Okay, so that is carried. Thank you very much. Let me just rearrange my papers now because I've got eight BN, eight C scattered all over the desk. So now we're passing on to application 8D, which is land at Mearsbrook Avenue. And I believe that's, oh, that's yours, Chris? Okay. And that's between pages, hang on, 97 and 122 of your application pack. And it is a full application for land at Mearsbrook Avenue, Newsham Road and Woodbank Crescent. Hand over to you, Chris.
Thank you, Chair. Can I first of all draw members' attention to the supplementary information, item three on there? There is an amendment to one condition, condition number 22. The amendment there is just to confirm which plot that particular condition refers to. And then there is an additional condition requiring details to be submitted for treatment and eradication of Japanese knotweed on the site. And then, not printed in your document that you've got there, but I have also noticed an error in the report, I just want to verbally confirm to save any possible confusion. Page 1110, there is a list of key issues, and the second of those key issues refers to the design of the proposal and its impact on the surrounding street scene and listed building. There is no listed building, Chair, that's an error. So just to make that clear, we don't refer to it elsewhere in the report. It's just crept in there somehow and hasn't been spotted, I'm afraid. So if, Claire wouldn't mind rolling slowly through the slides as I talk, so the, this proposal is for seven dwellings, predominantly three-bedroom dwellings, six of the seven are three-bedroom, one is two-bedroom. Located at the top of three roads, if we can scroll to, that will do for now, yes. You'll see there that the red line boundary is very unusual. It sits at the top of, from left to right or west to east, looking at that, Woodbank Crescent, Mearsbrook Avenue and Newsham Road. And then it also runs all the way through to Derbyshire Lane in the east, where there is a small access point. So the application is for seven dwellings and you'll see from, if we scroll down, the, that shows the relationship of the site to neighbouring dwellings, of which there are many in a terraced and semi-detached arrangement, quite densely populated. And then you'll see the relationship there to the former quarry where Homebase is based off Chesterfield Road, along with another unit to the bottom that's off the page. So the bottom of that red line, the wiggly bit, for want of a better expression, is at the top of a more gently sloping embankment that then leads to the quarry face. The subsequent slides, that gives you a bit of a better impression of the, kind of, an aerial view, a 3D aerial view. The next one, these are a series of photographs taken around the site, so this gives you an impression of the, if we just kind of go slowly through these, please, Claire, this just gives you an impression of the nature of the surrounding area. That's taken from within the site, looking out towards one of the properties at the top of Newsham Road. That's within the site, you can just pick out there two groups of dwellings, one to Gable Wall to one on the left and then just behind that little tree to the right. You can see the relationship between the properties there. So this has given an indication of the nature of the site. It's very heavily vegetated or has been with a group tree preservation order. There, that image there shows a group of lime trees at the top of Woodbank Crescent. There is a preservation order on those trees and they are being retained. That is at the top of Woodbank Crescent, there the trees again on the left, and within that area there would be an area of car parking. That's at the top of Newsham Road, where one dwelling will be located on the left and the three in that location there. You'll see there, there's a very small kind of informal turning head, that's not part of the highway, it's not a formal turning facility, it's something that's occurred over time and people use, but it's actually within the applicant's control. And that gives you a nature of the kind of topography with houses falling down the hill on each of the three roads with fantastic views of the city in the distance. The next few images are just a series of images of the site. Again, you can see the nature of the kind of the tree cover on it and the relationship to the individual dwellings. So, in planning policy terms, it's in a housing area. As I said, seven dwellings proposed, 16 car parking spaces in total, 15 arranged around the position of the dwellings with one satellite location off Derbyshire Lane, which would serve the individual plot. So if you just pause there, please, Claire, you can see the very bottom right-hand corner where the long, thin, green stretch of garden meets Derbyshire Lane, there is an additional parking space there for that smaller dwelling to the right. So you'll hopefully be able to see from there that at the top of Woodbank Crescent to the west is an area of car parking, five units there, five parking spaces there. At the top of the middle road, which is Mearsbrook Avenue, there are three dwellings to be located on the right as you reach the top of the hill, with further car parking spaces there. And then at the top of Newsham Road, there are four dwellings, three to the right when you reach the top and one to the left, again with their own parking facilities. Each unit has an electric vehicle charging point within those, a dedicated electric vehicle charging point within those parking spaces. If we can scroll down a couple more images, you'll see a bit more detail there, you can hopefully pick out the areas of car parking provision at the top. There is also, in doing that, a turning facility will be created that will improve the existing situation. If anyone's been to the site, they will notice that it's a literal dead end, there are no turning facilities there, so it's not the easiest site to turn around in. So this will actually improve matters in that regard. The next images are just further sort of images of the layout. And if we can just move on to some of the elevator, yeah, so you can start to see there that the small, kind of slightly squat unit is at the top of Newsham Road, adjacent to, that's the bottom of those three sections is showing a pair of semi-detached houses. The next image down shows, they're the properties that are on Mearsbrook Avenue and show a two-story element to the front, it actually rises to three at the rear, dealing with the topography of the site. But you'll see there that they're largely in scale with surrounding dwellings, they are render and brickwork with some small elements of metal cladding, that reflects the, again reflecting the, predominantly the character of that street. There's a range of terraced and semi-detached properties which tend to vary between render, brickwork, painted properties, there's quite a variety. The site is heavily vegetated, the trees are in the main retained, certainly those are to be protected and the better specifications. is heavily vegetated, the trees are in the main retained, certainly those that are protected and, and the better specimens. Some of the smaller species within the site, internal to the site are, are to be removed. But with additional tree planting around the edges of the site where, where possible. Measures have been undertaken to enhance biodiversity. You'll see on page, sorry, just bear with me. There's a, a, a list of, of measures that have been undertaken. At the top of page one, one, eight, there's a list of measures that have been undertaken within the development to enhance biodiversity. And an ecology report was undertaken on the site which demonstrated no protective species are, are residing there. They, they use the site for various things and, and will still be able to. The dwellings are sustainably constructed with the fabric-first approach. I've already mentioned the electrical, electric vehicle charging points. And there is a green wall system on five of the seven units where it's possible for it to survive. That is a cable system rather than one which is, is planted within, within the wall. But that will enhance biodiversity as well. So we're recommending approval, Chair. There are lots of objections, but we've, we've addressed those in the report. And we feel that this is a, a scheme that we should be supporting.
Thank you, Chris. Now, we have a number of speakers on this application. The first one is a Mr Mike Sims, who's speaking against the application. If you'd like to go and invite him into the room, please, Claire. We'll take a break for a couple of minutes while he appears. Thank you, Mr Sims. Could I ask you to pause for just one moment? One of our members has left the room. And if he's not here to hear the whole of your presentation, he can't take part in the decision. So I think it's important enough just to hang on until he returns. I'm sorry, you, you're sitting in the room, but, you know, your words, you've taken time to come here and, and speak to us. Your words deserve to be heard. Well, I hope he's coming back, yeah. I'm just saying, if announced to anybody in Sheffield that's watching where he's going now, but he may not come back. Thank you, Mr Sims. Thank you for your patience. If you'd like to turn your microphone on and the floor is yours for up to five minutes.
Am I coming through? Okay. The planning report states that through the, through development, there will be no adverse effects upon the occupants of neighbouring properties. And policy H fourteen states that development should not cause harm to the amenities, amenities of existing residents. The loss of sunlight amenity for existing residents is in conflict with these statements. The planning report makes use of the S P G guidance for designing house extensions for the assessment of overshadowing and overbearing despite the limitations of this guidance. The S P G guidance states itself, dimensions may be reduced if a neighbouring property is at a lower level or if there will be a large decrease in sunlight to a neighbouring dwelling. Twenty-eight and thirty Newsome Road and ninety-nine Mears Brook Avenue are at a lower level to plot one to five and will see a large decrease in their sunlight as evidenced in photos from residents. Twenty-five Newsome Road has a plot side garden. Number twenty-eight and thirty Newsome Road and ninety-nine Mears Brook Avenue have gardens located adjacent to the site that would have sunlight blocked by plot one to five. And number twenty-one, twenty-five and twenty-six Newsome Road have windows that face the application site that would lose sunlight. This large loss of sunlight has not been taken in consideration in the report. The S P G prompts design changes where there will be a loss of sunlight or impacts from differing building levels. But this, this has not been pursued in the planning report with no justification as to why not. There will be adverse impacts on local residents in conflict with the planning reports assessments. The report states that there will be no need to complete a sunlight assessment, but those of us who will lose sunlight disagree. And I urge the committee to refuse the application to allow the applicant to make design changes to mitigate those impacts. The landscaping plans state that there will be a replacement for the layland iconifer within the landholding of twenty-five Newsome Road with agreement of the landowners. The landowners do not agree to removal of this tree. And the exclusion zone should be enforced around the roof protection zone of this tree. Further, a derelict stone wall with trees growing from it are located on the boundaries of plot one to three and adjacent to eighty-four Mears Brook Avenue. amended plans show these within the red line boundary of the application. The unstable wall and trees pose a risk to the safety of pedestrians, existing houses and highways. These issues are not addressed in the planning report or the application, so I urge the committee to impress the need to resolve these issues. The planning report defines development as including enabling or preparatory works and the following pre-development conditions have been recommended, four, five, eight, eleven and twenty-five. On the fourteenth of October twenty-one, site enabling works began in conflict with those pre-development conditions. Habitats within the footprint of one, plot one to seven were cleared in one day using an excavator. An exclusion zone was not placed around the Japanese knotweed, the excavator was seen driving through the vegetation evidently healthy at the time. Vegetation, soil and debris has been stockpiled and Harris fencing installed. The fencing has been installed directly adjacent to the knotweed. Condition eleven states that to protect the biodiversity of the site, a landscape ecological management plan or a L E M P should be completed before any works commence since damage to these habitats is irreversible. The work carried out was completed in one day and was not gradual phased and not used brush cut as, as recommended in the ecology report and the planning report. These methods should have been detailed in the L E M P. We do support the new condition recommendation for the submission of Japanese knotweed management plan since the applicant had claimed treatment of this has already been completed when site clearance took place. Site machinery has been seen driving through this vegetation with no precautions in place. Activities have potentially spread this vegetation around an oster side. And I urge the planning commission, committee to condition the management plan is submitted for their approval, approval before discharge. The plan showing the exclusion zones and long-term management. There should be long-term monitoring of the site and qualified sign-off for remediation is completed. Plot seven is unlikely to be viable until remediation is completed. Stockpiled vegetation, soil and debris potentially contains Japanese knotweed fragments, so this should be considered contaminated waste in a licensed contract to use for its disposal, another suggested condition. The stockpiling of this vegetation is in conflict with the recommendations of the ecology report, which states vegetation should be removed from the site after it's been cut. These heaps attract protected reptiles, hedgehogs and badgers with the cold weather making these species less mobile and more prone to injury and killing when the piles are cleared. The L E M P or the Kemp should stipulate how these piles should be dismantled by hand under the watching brief of a suitably qualified ecologist to prevent impacts on site ecology. M P P F paragraph one eighty states that the need for measurable net gains for biodiversity. Biodiversity net gain is a demonstratable metric where biodiversity value of the site is calculated and compensation and enhancement provided to give tangible net gains for biodiversity. Although, although the ecology reports do include recommendations for enhancements, there is no measurable net gain assessment. So it must be assumed that will be a net loss for biodiversity. The provision of back boxes in the similar is not a suitable replacement for the lost areas of habitat from this site. And no B N G assessment using a recognised metric has been completed. There is no evidence that the application is compliant with-
Stop winding up, please, Mr Sims.
Sorry?
Could I ask you to stop winding up? Claire, we have a Mr- Thank you. We have a Mr Stephen Dawson wanting to speak now. Thank you, Mr Dawson. The floor is yours for up to five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chairman, thank you, members of the committee. I'm a local Sheffield resident and a local business owner. Looking to move my business actually into the development in, in Park Hill in the next quarter because I'm excited about the repurposing and the imagination of that development. I believe that we need imaginative schemes of, of, of development, both commercial and residential because we are facing a climate crisis, basically. So I'm excited about that. I think four reasons really why I'm deeply in support of this development. Number one, we need energy efficient homes of, of an appropriate quality to, to help to combat and reverse the impact of, of man-made climate change. And this development clearly, clearly does that. I think number two, we need to be imaginative in terms of utilizing space which is not of, of, of utility in, in terms of other, other purposes. And, and this scheme again clearly does that. I've been on site and, and it's an area wasteland which has previously been, been used as a, a dumping ground, basically. The evidence is, is clear there. Thirdly, I, my business is, is involved in the, in the local housing market. And I know firsthand from trying to help people to get onto the housing ladder that the market for housing in Sheffield is incredibly difficult, has been for a while. And particularly in the last eighteen months, is, is, is really, really difficult. So we need imaginative schemes such as shell home type developments that at least help people to, to get on the housing ladder in, in less conventional ways. And then fourthly, I feel that the scheme and, and the efforts that the developers have gone to to, to include the community in, in the development to, to build facilities such as turning circles, such as safe green areas for children add to the community cohesiveness in, in that area. So for those four reasons, I'm, I'm speaking in support of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Dawson. If you'd like to turn your microphone off and Claire will escort you out of the room. Claire, we have a Mr James Norton who should be waiting. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Norton. If you make yourself comfortable and the floor is yours for up to five minutes.
Madam Chairman, councillors, my name is James Norton. I'm the director of Sustainable Shell Homes, who are the applicant, and I'm also the architect of the scheme. I was born in Sheffield and trained at Sheffield University. My co-director, Peter Wardron, who is here with me today, has lived here for three decades, working at the University of Sheffield, including roles of Dean of Civil Instruction Engineering and Pro Vice Chancellor. I've lived in Mears Brook for many, many years, taking on a number of voluntary and community roles. And I built my career around a conviction to combat climate change by designing low-energy, environmentally friendly homes. Our company was set up by Peter and myself from these shared passions, specifically to provide greater access to the dream of building a low-energy home to answer the challenge of climate change and to provide opportunities for individuals and our team to learn the new green economy skills to require to deliver these houses. As architect and local resident as well as applicant, this site is rented an opportunity to deliver a sensitive and comprehensive design going far above and beyond the requirements of policy. And it's been an absolute pleasure to work with your officers and have their support to deliver a much-needed scheme on a site that once had houses on it, is allocated as residential in the local plan and has the benefit of an earlier outline approval. Whilst we are conscious and indeed genuinely sensitive to some local opposition to the changes that the development will bring to this area of scrubland, particularly from those who have been using small areas of our site. And sadly, that's led to some quite outlandish allegations. But we know we can't please everyone, but we genuinely have tried our best. And indeed, those parts that, that they use are less than ten percent of the site area. And indeed, they're all being retained as shared landscape and in many cases improved. Notwithstanding, fifteen people have also expressed their support, when typically as members will know, any comments of support on an application are quite rare. Also, some residents have expressed their support privately to me. And our research suggests the backing of around ninety-five percent of the local wider community. And again, obviously pleased to be told just today, a member of the public wanted to speak in support. Throughout, we tried to engage and work closely with neighbours where they were willing and local councillors, providing additional information. Offered meetings, design changes and additional reports with liaise with Lou Haiden, contributed to her work for COP twenty-six. And we're pleased to hear that after we liaised with her responding to her questions, she's told constituents that she no longer opposes the project. In respect to the main issues that have been raised, cars are a focus. However, the scheme provides three new public turning heads which should benefit over a hundred and twenty households in the area and help address the current access issues, which is obviously caused by an excess of the existing car ownership. Additionally, we've tried to address the parking concerns with sixteen spaces, which is in excess of the maximum that the local authority could ask for. For six three-bedroom houses in a single small two-bedroom, I think Chris detailed quite carefully. And the arrangement of those spaces means that any traffic impact would be spread over four separate roads. And indeed, if those typical current patterns of car ownership were reflected in our environmentally conscious new occupants, we'd expect several spaces could well become available to covenant residents, complementing the existing non-street parking, which is unaffected in the scheme you have before you. With respect to the former quarry, although this wasn't required per se, we provided an additional geotechnical report addressing slope stability, which shows clearly that even the far steeper slopes that not many of us perhaps want to build on at the back of Homebase, even those slopes are perfectly stable. The application site itself has quite a shallow slope of around thirty-five degrees Sheffield stand stone. Allowing safely constructed homes to be built off- allowing safely constructed homes to be built off that bedrock, indeed right up to the boundary if we wanted to, not that we are. In terms of ecology, your city ecologist has expressed no concerns whatsoever about the modification of what is a relatively quite low value habitat. The knotweed mentioned has already been treated, and I don't recognise the description of events portrayed earlier at all. The praise of your ecologist has obviously been supported by our own ecologist, who's completed five different site surveys, spent many, many hours on site and to report, and I've worked directly with him as the landscape architect to have significant input into the design. We do feel it's important to note, however, that a far less sensitive approach by a different developer could have achieved an approval on this site owing to the compliance with local national policy even before the activation of Tilt-A-Balance. Although none of this would have been required to achieve approval, we have done it because we think it is important and we think it is the right thing to do. So to conclude, as we sit in the context of the hopefully historic COP26 conference, knowing that heating and powering of our buildings are responsible for over half of our UK climate change emissions, this is a great opportunity for members to help deliver a sensitive and considered project wholly in accordance with policy, supported at every stage by your officers and other experts, of contemporary, super insulated homes that obviate the need for gas boilers, with a high ecological landscape design, green walls, green roofs, solar panels where the orientation allows electric vehicle charging points, Chris has described them more, and of course permeable surfaces, and a range of other sort of ecological enhancements. Taken together, we think that can in its own little way help answer the challenge of the climate emergency that we all face. Thank you for your time today, and look forward to watching the remainder of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr Norton. Thank you. I'm going to hand back the floor to Chris now so that you can comment on some of the submissions that you've heard.
Thank you, Chair. I don't think there's an enormous amount for me to comment on there. Just briefly though, the first speaker raised questions about adverse effects on living conditions of existing residents, and members will see from the report that we've done a very comprehensive assessment of that over two to three pages, looking at each individual plot and their relationship to the neighbour, and we don't find any adverse impact that we could... that would demonstrate unacceptable living conditions that would then support either a change to the scheme or refusal of permission. We think we're some way off that in fact. In terms of the conflict, there was suggested conflict with pre commencement conditions. There is no breach there because, first of all, there's no permission as yet and the conditions don't exist, but the work that's been undertaken on site isn't development of any nature. It's things like trial holes, pegging out for various other reasons, some small scrub clearance, none of which is development, so the developer hasn't breached anything in that regard. And then finally, in biodiversity net gain, this is something which members will be familiar with, it's referenced quite regularly. There was a reference to no kind of formal assessment using any metrics being undertaken, and that's correct. There is no widely available metric that is used at the moment. There is one being launched. The biodiversity net gain isn't law yet, it's planning guidance and it's something that we pursue and clearly have done in this case because the developer, and the developer's very much aware of that, but it's resulted in a number of things being provided, as I mentioned previously. So whilst there is no specific metric being used to churn out a figure, if you like, of what the impact would be, the issue has certainly been covered in quite some depth. I think that's all I wanted to say, Chair.
Thank you, Chris. Right, I'll open the item up to questions. I've got councillor Sanger.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, the site visit was incredibly useful. I mean, I live within a 10-minute walk of that site for 10 years, I didn't know it was a site, so really, I learnt a lot on site visit. So really, two questions. One is, in terms of the outline planning permission in 2005, what sort of number of properties were we expecting then? We do have an indicative number. And the second thing, really picking up the first speaker's comments about the removal of Japanese knotweed and making sure that, because we think we know it's invasive species and we know it needs to be treated and removed in an appropriate manner, so can we just have some assurance that that is happening?
Okay, thank you.
Chair, the outline permission from 2005, I'm not convinced to have detail of how many units that involved. It was described as residential development, which can often be just a red line around the site with no numbers specified, and I believe that's the case here. Insofar as the removal of the knotweed, yeah, the developer has advised us that when you remove any... well, first of all, there's no offence in being an owner of a site with knotweed on it, it's causing it to spread, which is the offence under the Wildlife and Countryside Act. So if the developer had done anything wrong in that regard, they would be liable for action under that act from a different body, not from the planning authority. But they assure us that they're partway through the measures that are required when dealing with knotweed, which includes a series of spraying events to kill the plant effectively, and then it's removed in a controlled manner. So that we anticipate that the submission that comes in to approve the details under that condition will include reference to that and how they then plan to go about the rest of that work.
Thanks, Chair. I mean, in terms of the Japanese knotweed, I mean, I think, clearly there's those conditions. I'm still a little confused about the original outline plan permission and also the fact that, I know I accept it's in housing land, but clearly there was reference to previous development on the site. Is it, there's this development on the site that was quarried when the quarry was reopened and so those buildings were lost, you know, in the 1940s or whatever? So the actual site of these buildings, was there previous buildings on?
I can't say with certainty, Chair. It's my understanding that the site did accommodate housing in the past, but I don't have that information now.
Okay, thank you very much. Is that okay Andy? Right, okay. I've got councillor Holmshaw.
First thing I wanted to say, I think councillor Wetherall had your hand up at one point. I just wanted to say I spotted it, but I'm not sure anyone else did. Yeah, okay, that's cool, that's great. So, yes, there are three questions I've got. So there's a mention by one of the speakers of replacement of a tree was not being agreed. Is that correct? So that's question number one. The second thing is, I just wanted to confirm about knotweed. So one of the things is about knotweed, so I understand is it's season, it can only be done seasonally, removal, so I just wanted to confirm that one, if you've had an answer to that one, Chris. And thirdly, I think an offer was made during Mr Norton's talk where he mentioned about car parking spaces? I don't know whether anyone else picked up, but there was an offer made there that if less use was made of car parking spaces by new residents, then those car parking spaces would then be made available to existing residents nearby. I wonder whether anyone else picked up on that as well.
Okay, Chris.
Sorry, Chair, partly with the bell ringing, I slightly missed the last question. You were talking about councillor Holmshaw was talking about the potential future availability of the car parking that's being provided to wider residents, was it not used by those proposed?
Yeah, I got that as well, councillor Holmshaw. James Norton said that there may be surplus parking that could be offered out to the community.
Okay, sorry, I just wanted to make sure I've got that correctly. I'll deal with that one first. I mean, that's something that might happen in the future. I don't think anyone should rely on that as a certainty at all. I think the point the applicant was making there was that the level of parking provision is quite generous for these individual units, and therefore there is a possibility that at some point in the future, private arrangements might be capable of being entered into. I think the other point he made was that the turning areas or the access which forms a turning area to those units, to those parking spaces, is available for people to use, which I think the point he was making there was that is an enhancement. Now, is knotweed removal seasonal? I'm not sure, but that's something that they would have to cover within the submission, and as necessary, we would liaise with appropriate consultees, whether that would be the ecology unit or our own landscape team. And the replacement of the tree that the resident said wasn't agreed, he referred to that being a tree, a Leylandi, in one of the neighbour's gardens. The Leylandi of itself is of no merit in landscape terms, so there would be no desire on our part to see that retained. And any effect of that or any discussions with that particular party are really outside the planning system and outside this particular application. If the neighbour and the developer want to come to an agreement, then that's fine, but from a planning point of view, there'd be no desire or justification to protect it, Chair.
Okay, and now we've got councillor Wetherall.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Just going back on Andy's point, councillor Sanger's point, it should worry us, and it's not saying that we've got a... any report we have these days on Japanese knotweed actually comes from an articultrist, and I think we're missing that. I know officers do bring it up from time to time, it's been going out to landscaping and one thing or another, but it's very... when you see a site being claimed by a JCV, like we did on these slides earlier, it's... well, Japanese knotweed, you've got to treat it three times over five years, you know what I mean? So it's not something you can get away easily, and each store you've got to impress it in, fire it in and out, so it's got to be done by somebody who's doing that. And I don't know if this has been done on this site or not, and I just wondered if officers have actually seen a certificate from a landscape or articultrist who's actually been out there and treated that over the last few years. Because if this does go off-site and dumped somewhere else, it's just spreading it around, you know what I mean? And I would say that all this waste, if you can't secure a certificate showing us that, I think any spoil off this site would have to go through a waste disposal firm with certificate, Chair. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris, can you comment on that?
I know the points councillor Wetherall was making there, and that's the kind of thing I was referring to with regular spraying, I'm not so familiar with the level of intervals, et cetera. I'm not aware that we've seen any certificates at this stage. I haven't personally, but I'm not the person who's been dealing most closely with it. And it really is, we are almost asking a question there as to whether any offence has been committed, and that's not something that the planning authority would deal with. It would be something outside our remit. We impose a condition to, as a preventative measure, as much as anything, and to ensure it's dealt with as part of this particular development. But any work that has been carried out already is, in a sense, not for us to be acting upon, Chair. We would expect, along with the submission, as set out in the condition, we would expect that to include the references to the various, either already carried out or proposed spraying methods, measures, timings, et cetera. If that has an impact on the timing of the development, then so would it, Chair. But I'm not in a position to say we've seen a certificate and we know exactly when it was done and to what level it's been done.
You want to come back, Gary?
Yeah, I'm not happy with that answer, Chair. It's, is this land acceptable for building on? That's what they're saying. Well, yes, we know it is, but it's not as far as that, we haven't got that far yet. And I think it's a legal point now, I don't want to ring up, Chair, is where we can suspend this application until we've actually got the certificates of lawfulness of that Japanese knotweed, because it's something we should be taking very seriously, Chair. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm just going to come in here, but if we agree this application, aren't we imposing the condition on them about the treatment and the disposal of the Japanese knotweed?
Chair, if invited back in, I'm sorry, I've just invited myself back in, I've realised, that was going to be, what I was going to say, that that's the point of the condition, to make sure that no development takes place until that's agreed for resolution.
As we've seen, as this developer has already done, he's actually been on-site and cleared it, Chair. They have, no? We've just seen it. Well, I've just seen a JCV, can we just go back to those slides? That were all landscaped off, and that had slides around it, but that's part of the site into it, what we've just seen.
Chair, the landscape and ecology work that was done identified the locations of the knotweed, and where appropriate or where necessary, that of itself has been fenced off. I think there is one image which shows, hopefully, we'll get there, I think, I think that, I think you can just see some harris fencing to the left hand side, and that shows an area of knotweed, it doesn't actually show it, I'm afraid, but it includes an area of knotweed that's been enclosed. So the developer knows where it is and has, we're told, done the work to... Pardon? There, sorry. So we just pause there, I think it's the, I can't quite see it from here, but I think it's the area, sorry, it's to the right there, where that's been enclosed. There's an area, the point of my response, Chair, is that the developer has identified the locations of the knotweed on the site and separated them off, as far as I'm aware. But I would also kind of add that if, again, that we have the condition there to deal with it going forward, anything that's happened until now is not a matter for us as a planning authority in terms of any offence that's been committed. It obviously feeds into how we deal with the discharge of the condition, but that's the purpose of the condition, to enable us to consider that properly.
But what I'm saying is, on this photo here, we can't tell from that if there are any Japanese knotweed growing in there, can we? All right, fair enough, that piece is fenced off where they're saying it is. Right then, so if this gets passed today, then officers will be doing checks on that, that's what you're saying, to make sure it's all the five years treatment to be going ahead? All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Okay, thank you, Gary. Councillor Davidson.
Thank you very much. I've got to bring Helen in here, otherwise she'll feel she's redundant, but I've got two questions, otherwise. I'll start with Helen. The vehicle turnaround, how do you make sure that cars don't park in it? Are you going to put... Would you put yellow lines down? That's the first question.
Thanks, Chair. There aren't any waiting restrictions proposed, because it isn't actually going to be part of the adopted highway, but I don't think cars will park in it, because if they do, then they're not going to be able to access the car parking spaces. So I think it will, by virtue of its layout, remain clear.
Okay, right. The next question is directed to Chris. First of all, the last house, which is where the knotweed was actually, but this question relates to something else. While we need these sort of two-bedroomed houses being built, we need more of those, this one is really squeezed on the edge. In fact, I think you'd have to breathe in to get round the house, between the house and the fencing. Can you tell me, what is the guidance on the space between a building and a fence? Thank you. That's one of... Shall I ask the next one as well, or do you want?
Please, would you ask all your questions at once and then I can direct them to whoever they need to go to, Roger?
Sorry, I missed that, sorry.
Ask away.
Oh, thank you. And finally, people, we know that when we visited this place yesterday, that there's been some work done on the land stability, perhaps you could explain to the committee what has taken place? Thank you.
Chris, would you like to come in?
Yes, thanks, Chair. So what's the guidance for a gap between a house and a fence? There isn't any. A house can be built right up to a boundary. In this particular case, the applicant's chosen to allow a gap of around a metre to the fence line, but you can build up to a boundary. Terms of land stability, there was a report undertaken in September that confirmed no concerns in terms of ability to, with the existing stability of the graded bank and the quarry face, and no with any concerns about building on it, adjacent to it. So the report was prepared, as I say, this was a more recent report than previous reports that had also been undertaken, that had given some confidence to the developer, but this was undertaken as part of this application and confirmed its acceptability.
Okay, thank you. Right, I've got councillor Garbutt.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going back to this mechanical digger that's done some clearing, but it's not to do with Japanese knotweed. On page 117, I think it is, last but one paragraph, "A precautionary approach to development is suggested and it's recommended scrub is cleared by hand, brush cutters and contractors being alert to the potential for finding badger sets or evidence of badger sets." If it's been cleared by a mechanical digger, and there were any badgers there, hopefully there weren't, those badgers would have been evicted very cruelly. How, and if this is what has happened, how would the planning department view the breaking of this condition even before it's been imposed, as it were? Because I find this happens a lot. We find that developers put in an application and they start clearing the land before anything's been passed. How can we make sure that that doesn't happen and how can we find out whether or not anything has been damaged by the mechanical digger?
Chris, would you like to come in?
Yes, Chair. The images show some parts of the site that have been cleared, and when you look at that image that's on screen now, it looks like the site has been cleared, but in actual fact, it's quite a small area of the much wider site that's actually been touched. And that's been done for various reasons, to do things like soakaway tests, other trial pits to establish ground conditions, et cetera. So I just want to be clear that the whole site hasn't been cleared by a digger. That would have also been informed by, there's been a series of ecology reports undertaken that have identified the level of habitat that's present, and that confirmed that there were no badger sets, there were no roosts for certain. There were certain elements that had potential to accommodate species in the future, which is why we always then talk about a precautionary approach when you come to develop it, because you're then looking out for those things when you're removing them. But in terms of badger sets, there were no badger sets on the site identified over a series of, I think, three different inspections. So I think that answers kind of where we've got to. In terms of how we view it, then the conditions aren't breached, because as I said earlier, they don't exist yet, Chair. And even if there had been sets involved and the works have removed any sets, then again, that's not a planning matter, it's a matter for the Wildlife and Countryside Act, but I'd suggest that I think, I believe the developer did the work that they've done in the knowledge of the ecology reports, Chair.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, thank you very much.
No, I'm not quite satisfied with that. I think if we're going to put conditions on, and I'm fairly aware that the developer would be aware of those conditions, even though we haven't passed this yet. To be honest, I'm not really concerned about what the condition is, I am concerned about any badgers that happen to be there, but whatever the condition is, if the developer then says, "Well, I'm not going to get done by the planners if we go ahead before this has been passed", how do we deal with that? That's, you know, because they're breaking something that before it becomes illegal to break it, shall we say? Yeah, but I think that, you know, it's a bit like saying, like cops saying, "We've got till 2030 to stop cutting trees." Well, everyone's going to start cutting trees down like mad and then stop in 2030. And it's exactly the same sort of thing as here. We know what the conditions are, the developer knows what the conditions are, and before it becomes a legal condition, he goes ahead and does it anyway. I don't know how we deal with that, whether it's a matter of planning or law, or, I don't know.
Please come back in, Chris, yeah?
I think what I've tried to do, I'll have another go, is explain the differences. So there is no breach of a planning condition until there is, first of all, a permission in place that has a condition, and then the developer does something that breaches that So we could only act in that scenario. In a non-planning condition way, in a non-planning condition scenario, if there is, for example, a badger set on the site and someone destroys a badger set, then that is, as I say, it's a Wildlife and Countryside Act matter, and any prosecution, any action taken through that would not be undertaken by the planning authority. And I think the other thing to note as well is that the most... There's nothing that the developer's done here that is development, that requires planning permission in any way. So everything that they've done has been the kind of thing that anyone could do on any piece of land where planning permission doesn't exist. They've not committed any offence in planning terms, Chair.
Thank you, Chris. I'm going to ask Vicky to come in here with regards to the legal position.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to reiterate what Chris has said, in terms of what's happened so far hasn't constituted development, so there wouldn't be any enforcement that would be able to take in respect to what's already happened on site. But to my mind, it does seem to be speculating on what's happened on site to date, and I'm not aware of any evidence of how the site has been cleared in any event, so just a lot of speculation as to what's happened on site, and I'm not sure that really adds to the discussion in terms of the planning permission before us today.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to pass on now, because I've got Tony Dams, councillor Dams, indicating he wants to ask a question.
Can you say this quickly? I mean, the JCV could well have been involved in clearing the knotweed, because we had a problem in my ward and JCV had to be brought on-site to remove soil to a certain depth to make sure he got it, but that, again, I accept Chris's advice that that's not a planning matter for all.
I don't know if there's any answer to that. No, there isn't. Right, I'm going to pass on now. I've got two final speakers. I've got councillor Homshaw, then councillor Williams.
Hello. I just wanted to come back and talk to Helen, because it's in connection with the turning circle, potential car parking on there. I can say there are places in my ward where that does happen, that car parking spaces for people's houses are blocked, and so without any enforcement or yellow lines, how can we improve it? How can we make sure that this does not happen?
Well, you can put double yellow lines down. I would suggest that the chance of them being enforced in the area that they are would be pretty slim. So I think really, it's neighborliness, I would have to say really, in that people don't obstruct a vehicle crossing. If they do obstruct a vehicle crossing, it is that if they refuse to move their car, it's actually a police matter, but I think for the benefit of everybody in terms of using the turning area and also being able to park, it would be futile for people to block it. Thanks, Chair.
Okay. And finally, councillor Williams.
Thank you, Chair. Could you just confirm, Chris, that, I'm looking at plots one and four, that the relationship between those buildings and the windows of their neighbours is within the planning guidance?
Chris?
Yes, Chair. So plots one and four are those... Well, plot one is immediately south of the last property, I can't remember the number, on Mersbrook Avenue, and plot four is immediately south of the last property on Newsham Road. Yes, they are, Chair. They've both met the 45-degree angle test that we often refer to. So in terms of overshadowing, et cetera, they meet that quite comfortably. And there's therefore no impact on those kind of main rear-facing windows within each of those properties. They're also staggered, they're not immediately adjacent to any side-facing windows on those properties, they're staggered to allow light to reach those side-facing windows. So yes, they meet our guidelines, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, right, I'm going to pass to comments now. Councillor Davidson.
Yes, this is a very ambitious plan, I think. The only worry I had was with the house that was on the edge, I think I'd need to be a paragliding enthusiast to take that house on, but I think it's, overall, I would accept that it's an imaginative design. Thank you.
Thank you for your brevity, Roger. Councillor Sanger.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I should be supporting the officer's recommendation, and this is land in a housing area and we need new homes, so, you know, that has to be the starting point. These are very sustainable, sustainable houses in terms of construction and the amount of heat that would be needed to warm them up, so, I mean, they are the sort of energy efficient homes that we should be looking to build, and they're in a housing area, and so I support it for that. I think the turning circles will be an enhancement to the current position. The current position, we all found it on-site visit, we all found ways of turning our vehicles round, it was not, it was sometimes found that easier than others. So, you know, I support that. I mean, I think quite rightly councillors are concerned about Japanese knotweed, it's a horrible invasive species, and the quicker we remove it entirely from Sheffield, the better. I say, I have similar opinions with American, you know, American signal crayfish as well, so, I mean, these sort of invasive species, we have to remove before they... So I fully accept what the officers have said about removing the knotweed. It is a difficult site, and as I say, I think we're all surprised that we got seven, and as councillor Davidson's just said, plot seven does look more challenging than the others, but, you know, I think we just have to accept what we've heard, and I will be supporting the scheme. I think we're going to have to look at other innovative schemes on difficult sites in housing areas to meet our needs. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Right, since I've got no more indications, I'm going to pass to the vote. I'm going to go around the room to... Right, the application is for the erection of seven dwellings on land at Mersbrook Avenue, Newsham Road, on Woodbank Crescent. So for the reasons set out in the report below with the amendments, the officer recommendation is to grant conditionally. I'm going to come to you first, councillor Garbutt.
Thank you, Chair. I shall vote for this with some reservations, but for nevertheless.
Thank you. Councillor Homshaw?
I shall be voting for the officer's recommendation in this case.
Councillor Rosenges?
For, Chair.
Councillor Price?
For, Chair.
Councillor Dams?
For, Chair.
Councillor Nas?
For, Chair.
Councillor Mastet?
For, Chair.
Councillor Sanger?
For the officer's recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Davidson?
For the officer's recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Williams?
Yeah, for, Chair.
For, Chair.
And councillor Wetherall?
With voting for, Chair, I shall be watching the conditions very closely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I reckon that's been carried unanimously, haven't we? Thank you very much. We're on to our last application today. I'm just going to pause from it and ask councillor Woodcock if you're okay, because I know you've got an appointment later. Okay. Just wanted to give you the chance to, not bail, but to leave the meeting at this point. Thank you. So we're on to our final application now, and this is over to Dinah. It's a planning application for a change of use, it's application number 21/03684/68U, and it's a change of use for a dwelling house class C3 to support a living accommodation for children and young persons to use class C2. Dinah, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. Could we have the next slide, please? Thank you. You'll see from the image on screen now that the site, outlined in red, comprises of quite a large two-storey detached dwelling house situated at the very western end of Norwood Drive. Next slide, please. In this aerial photograph, you can see that the site is bound by allotments to the north and by wood and grassland to the west, plus there's a small car park just to the west of the site there. Norwood Drive also provides access to the chief training centre, which that small Norwood Drive also provides access to the chief training centre, which that small car park serves, which is seen in the bottom left-hand section of the screen there. And that provides specialist education and training to young people, but it's not related to the proposal. Next slide, please. The site benefits from at least four off-street parking spaces. It's got a garage, as you can see here in the photograph, and then spaces to the front and side. I mean, it's a minimum of four spaces, I would say. Next slide, please. The site has a good-sized rear garden, approximately four times the recommended minimum size garden. Next slide, please. And in this view of the rear garden, looking back towards the house, you could just see the wooded woodland in view on the right-hand side of the screen. Next slide, please. This is a view of the site fronted. It's taken from the sort of grassland to the west of the site, so it's looking back east over the forecourt at the front of the site, showing the parking area. Next slide, please. That's a view of the existing site access. Next slide. And this is a view towards the rear site boundary. The allotments are beyond the fence and the sort of tree, line of trees in the photograph there. Thank you. And this is a view of the front elevation of the house and the forecourt, as you see it from Norwood Drive. Next slide, please. Thanks. This is existing and proposed plans. The existing house has four double bedrooms at first-floor level and generous ground-floor living accommodation. There are no external or internal alterations proposed, it's simply a change of use. As proposed, the house would be used to provide assisted living accommodation for up to three children aged between 10 and 17 in a family-style setting with up to three full-time carers, including two overnight staff. That's it, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Dinah. We have two speakers against this application. I'm going to be a little bit topsy-turvy here because, Claire, we have a speaker who's actually going to be present, that's Shazia Ahmed. And we also have a statement that councillor Mark Jones has asked to be read out. Do you think you've got a chance to read that, Abby?
This is a statement from councillor Mark Jones. Thank you for allowing this written statement to be read out. I'm sorry, I'm not able to attend today due to family sickness. I and my fellow Burngrieve councillors, Safir Said and Talib Hussain, have spoken with residents on Norwood Road. A significant majority strongly oppose this planning permission. From talking to residents, it is clear that they are concerned about the impact this development will have on this road. At the top of Norwood Road is chief training. This centre undertakes excellent work in helping equip our youth with the skills they need as they transition to independent adults. However, there is a burden placed on the residents of Norwood Road, one that will be familiar with those who live close to a school or place of learning. It is feared that there will be even greater disruption of this cramped overcrowded little cul-de-sac should the planning permission be granted for the development at 24 Norwood Road. But more significantly is the fear that the presence of criminal behaviour makes this road an unsafe one in which to house vulnerable young people. It is feared that not only will this development give reason for drug dealers and other criminals to frequent Norwood Road, but that those living within this property, 24 Norwood Road, would become entrapped by criminals groomed and exploited. This latter fear is the most significant and pressing challenge that must be addressed should planning permission go ahead. The lack of wider consultation, not just the minimum required under planning law, has led to a loss of trust between residents on Norwood Road and the developer and the owner of this property. The fact that the developer is moving out of his own home to live elsewhere has asked why he feels this site is appropriate for this development, yet his new home in a more sedate area of Sheffield is not suitable. It effectively comes down to the question of why Burngrieve again? Why is it always Burngrieve that is expected to take the burden? I welcome the development of a home where young people can grow into flourishing adults. We all know we want all our children to have loving nurturing homes, so I am deeply conflicted on this one. It really does come down to the question of, is this the right place for development? If the committee deems that Norwood Road is the right place, then we would ask the committee to place on record, and if possible, add to the conditions of planning approval, that the operator of this site work closely with residents to ensure sufficient safeguards are put in place to protect the rights and residence of Norwood Road, as well as the safety of those children that will live at this property. And this does not just cover the environment within the property, but the wider environment that these young people would look to call their home. Substance abuse takes place at Crabtree Pond within our local parks and within the ancient woodland that grows around this site. We need to be assured that the young people living in this property can enjoy these spaces whilst the care's responsibility for the welfare of these young people ensure that they are safe to venture out and about. Otherwise, this home would be little more than a prison for these vulnerable young people. We need to know that avenues will exist where inappropriate behaviour can be raised and that such concerns are genuinely heard and responded to. I know that much of this lies outside the remit of the planning system. However, if such assurances can be written into the conditions of approval, then I'm sure that residents will feel greatly reassured. However, if there cannot be any assurances provided by this process, then we must ask that this application is rejected, with a direct given that the developer goes back to the community and genuinely consults with them. I do not want a situation to develop where the young people hosted within 24 Norwood Road feel unwelcome and unwanted simply because the developer has not done his duty in delivering trust and a sense of partnership with the neighbours, who will be expected to host these young people and care for them as they would their own children and the children of their neighbours. This whole process is one that has already delivered a sense of mistrust and animosity. It is incumbent on us all to address these issues and require a better outcome for the vulnerable young people who would hopefully call 24 Norwood Road home. Thank you for your indulgence in allowing this statement to be read out. Councillor Mark Jones.
Thank you for that, Abby. The other speaker is not to be found. So I'll go straight to, back to Dinah, if you want to make any comment on those issues.
Thank you, Chair. I think there was one of the first concerns that councillor Jones alluded to there was perhaps traffic and parking. And obviously, Norwood Drive takes the traffic for the chief training centre at the western end of the site. This is a home for three children with three staff, two of whom will be there overnight. They work shifts, but the shifts, they don't come and go, they work for 24 or 48 hours. The amount of movements associated with the staff working there would be minimal. And while the site will be visited by specialists in much the same way that a house receives visitors, I don't think we could argue that the amount of parking attracted by this development is going to have unreasonable impact on highway safety. And Helen might want to come in on that point afterwards. In terms of worries about criminal behaviour, fear of crime can be a material consideration, but only when it's supported by evidence. And there's no evidence in terms of this proposal that it would generate any crime. We're talking about children between 10 and 17. They could all be 10, they could be 17, but they'll be living in a sort of household-style, family-style environment with three staff. And I suppose then coming on to that sort of final point in terms of what safeguards are in place. The planning legislation doesn't ensure that children's homes operate safely and effectively and efficiently. That's covered by separate legislation. In this case, it's the Children's Homes Regulations of 2015. They provide the quality standards for England and they require Ofsted to undertake annual inspections, but they also require monthly visits by an independent person. And all these regulations ensure that children's homes like this are run safely and efficiently. And I think I would argue that it's not for us as a planning authority to duplicate that legislation and those requirements. If we attach a condition, it's got to be necessary, it's got to be reasonable, it's got to be directly related to the development. And I think I would argue that in this case, if we accept the principle of a small residential children's home in a housing area, I don't think it's for us to impose a condition requiring it to be run effectively when that's covered by separate legislation.
Okay, thank you, Dinah. Welcome to Helen now for any comments on road use and traffic.
Thank you, Chair. I think really, all I would do is echo what Dinah's said. I mean, Norwood Drive is a standard width carriageway with footways. The parking, as we say, is at least four spaces, which we're quite confident will be able to accommodate the staff and any potential visitors to the property. There might be a slight increase over and above a traditional family property. However, that would quite easily be accommodated on Norwood Drive as it is at the moment. So there certainly wouldn't be any concerns from a highway safety perspective. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Helen. We've done one last sweep for the last speaker. They've given up on us. So I'm going to move to members' questions now. I've got councillor Garbutt indicating...
Thank you, Chair. Again, it is on this fear of crime thing. I wondered if the police have been consulted, because they quite often are consulted on developments as to whether developments are, you know, represent any danger to the community. Have they been consulted in this?
No, they haven't.
Councillor Price?
Yes, Chair. Just to say that I was telephoned yesterday about a long conversation with a very low-rate resident who claimed that they hadn't had sufficient notice of this meeting, where they couldn't make a reason to come and speak. And on the council website, not the committee website, but the council, it didn't give the date of the meeting. So she was objecting that this had not been adequately informed of when we could meet. And I don't know if that's true or not. The second claim that they were making was the position of the chief training centre, because clearly, these are older kids. This 10 to 17, I think the 16-plus at chief... And she was very worried that this wasn't true, that it was 10 to 17, that we're much older kids. I just wonder whether the officer could comment on that, Chair.
Dinah, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Chair. The council website, the planning pages on the council website do make it clear that interested parties are responsible for tracking the progress of an application, including if it's to be presented to planning committee. There are instructions on how to track an application. If you've registered and you've made comments, the system can then update you of any changes. The agenda is published eight days before the committee meeting. So if people are tracking the progress of an application, they should be aware of it, that it's attending committee. But at least for a couple of years, we haven't been informing people of applications being brought to committee, and that is made clear on the website. In terms of links to chief training, the applicant has made clear that the intention is for children between 10 and 17 to be housed in this facility or these premises. And there are no links, as far as I'm aware, to chief training. That's a separate entity run by a separate organisation, and I don't believe there are any links to that.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
I've got councillor Dams.
Could I just ask, where will the referrals to these agents be coming from? And I might have a follow-up question.
Dinah?
Thank you, Chair. The applicants, we've sort of queried the applicant about this, and they've confirmed that they'd be working initially with Ofsted to upgrade the property. They then will have to work with Ofsted to obtain the necessary approvals, but they can only do that once the planning permission has been granted. So they'll be working closely with Ofsted. And they've then put together a care team liaising with Sheffield City Council regarding the placement of children into the home. Now, they say that most children are likely to be local to Sheffield and the surrounding area, but there may be occasions when it's desirable to give a home to a child from another part of the country, for example, where that child is at risk in their local area. So while most children are likely to be from Sheffield and Sheffield region, some of them, occasionally, there may be children from further afield.
Just to say, I'm happy with that. And I'm sort of reassured because of the supervision 24 hours. If it wasn't that sort of thing, then I might have had some concern.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Richard Williams.
Thank you, Chair. In a proposal statement, it has some quite specific numbers, like 10 to 17, up to three full-time carers, three children. If these were to be varied, would they have to come and seek a new application? Or are those really absolutely binding terms of this application?
Dinah?
Thank you. The numbers aren't binding. Obviously, the size of the house can only accommodate a certain number of children and staff. So I would say the size of the house is going to restrict the number of children and staff that could accommodate it, accommodated by it. And as I said, it will be working with Ofsted and under the guidance of the Children's Homes Regulations, that the detail would be sort of panned out. You are considering the change of use of a dwelling house to supported living accommodation for young children. It may be two children. I would argue that it's unlikely to be any more than three because of the size of the house. But in theory, I guess it could accommodate four. But the applicant is proposing to accommodate three and three staff.
Could I just come back? So it's specifically children. If they wanted to change it for young adults, would they have to come back with a different application?
Thank you. It's for children and young people. And they've set up to 17 years old. Again, if there was a young person who was 18 years old in need and there was room and it accorded with the arrangements they had in place with Ofsted and under the Children's Homes Regulations, we haven't applied any restrictions. And I don't think it would necessarily be appropriate to do so. But the intention of the applicant at this stage is to provide accommodation for children and young people between 10 and 17.
Is that okay? Yeah, okay. I've got councillor Sanga.
Yes. I mean, obviously, first question, somebody needs to tell councillor Jones it was Norwood Road, Norwood Drive, but that's obviously not for the officer to reply to. So in terms of chief training centre, I mean, clearly the residents have got this concern that chief training centre already got lots of kids with challenges there and that we're adding some more. So what assurances can you give that the two organisations are not adding to each other's challenges, given that they're going to be opposite each other?
Do you want to come back, Dinah?
Thank you, Chair. I think I can only reiterate, I mean, I can't guarantee, I can't guarantee if a family moves in this house with four teenagers that that isn't going to cause a problem. What I can say, it's going to be managed 24 hours a day by two or three staff, in similar proportion to the number of children who are going to be there. And some of those children are likely to be young and living in a family environment. So a family-style environment. So I can't give you any assurances, but I can say that it seems unlikely, given the size of the facility and the level of inspection by Ofsted and the requirement... size of the facility and the level of inspection by Ofsted and the requirement for monthly visits and annual assessments, that it seems likely that any problems would be flagged up quite quickly and dealt with.
Thanks, Chair. I mean, the other point is this highways point that the residents talk about, because clearly the whole of the area, we know the parking for the Northern General Hospital does sort of cause problems for everybody. And so, you know, the residents are obviously saying they've already got problems in terms of the dropping off times for the chief training centre. And it's saying, I think the question is, is this house going to have any more comings and goings or vehicles than you would with a family home? I think that's the question, isn't it? And is there any highways impact on that?
I'll hand that across to Helen, if you'd like to comment.
Thanks, Chair. I think first, in terms of the provision of parking, because obviously, I think that would be a concern if people felt that they were going to get additional on-street parking on there. Well, it's a four-bedroom property, and the council parking guidelines, which are maximum guidelines, indicate two to three spaces for a four-bedroom property. So there's actually a little bit more parking than they would be required to provide. As I've said, I think generally, the way that we've looked at it is that this is more or less going to operate as a normal family home. Yes, you may have one or two extra visitors, but that is not something that is going to be so onerous as to have a detrimental impact on highway safety. Thanks, Chair.
Chair, I mean, I just want to flag this up to officers here. This is, you know, we get these all the time. There must be a different way of handling this in terms of policy matters. I remain concerned that every application for a small children's home has to come through this process. And I'm not convinced that we are doing those young people justice with this process. And I remain concerned, I mean, this is the fifth or sixth we've had in the last 10 years when I've been on this committee. And I'm just concerned that the process doesn't feel right, that the positives in terms of young people's opportunities are not given a hearing when we do get the negative side, clearly from local people. And I don't know what we can do about it, but I remain uncomfortable that we aren't able to deal with these issues in the round. Thank you, Chair. I don't know.
I don't know if there's any response to that, but I know that we've all noted your comments. Thank you, councillor. The last speaker I have for questions is councillor Wetherall, and then I shall close this section and move on to comments.
Thank you, Chair. We started off earlier with Gary, now it's got to councillor Wetherall, so I must have done something wrong. I've got to agree with Andy from the last 20 years. I've sat here for the last 20 years on and off, and yes, kiddies' homes, it thinks it should be somewhere else, because all the car parking issues, I can understand Helen saying it's a three-bedroom, that's all we can keep saying, because yes, it is. You've got to have three or four parking spaces. There's only going to be one adult there, you know what I mean? So these are kids, so they aren't going to drive, it's other people coming in and off, so I can't see a problem with that. But I've got a bitter an issue earlier when you were saying to council over here, and I put down a condition here, because, you know, you could get three 18-year-olds coming in here, you know, just coming back from Orimando or something, they've got to have a rute over their head, you know what I mean? So it's 17, if they're asking for 17, why can't we condition it to 17? Thanks, Chair.
Dinah, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Chair. The description of the development is supported living accommodation for children and young people. And as I said, they will be seeking the necessary permits and licences and whatever from Ofsted. My example about the possibility of there being a sort of an 18-year-old being housed, I mean, they are still young people, so that would seem a possibility under the description of the development. Whether it's appropriate to put a condition on that limits them to 17 years old is difficult, because, I mean, when I have an 18-year-old, she's just turned 18, and she's still a child, very much so, and I think they probably need to be in a similar environment rather than in some form of adult facility. So it may be possible, it may be possible to put a limit on if members felt very strongly about it. I mean, conditions, as I said before, they do have to be necessary, they have to be reasonable, have to be directly related to the development, they have to pass all the six tests, they have to be enforceable. And I'm just not convinced that to say that they couldn't house a sort of a young 18-year-old in need may not be appropriate, but...
Okay, I know there's a bit of mumbling on the other side, I don't know, it could be. But what I'm trying to make it, the point is that the fears of the local residents and the councils have talked to people and gone out further afield, and what they're saying is right as well about all the homes in that area still going on look, you know. And I just think this could fear some of the adults, you know, the local residents by saying an age limit is only going to be 17, because if you get anything over 17, they could go out and about further and, you know, and just be on the streets, where that worries a lot of people. Anyway, I'm going to leave it there. Don't answer me back then, because I think we've pushed that limit. He'll adopt him or he would.
Okay, thanks for that, Gary. I've got two members that were already indicated for comments, and I'm not coming to you first, Peter, I'm coming to Tony first. Councillor Dams.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with Andy, councillor Sangha, that we're not qualified to judge the regime that will be operating these properties. But somebody who will be qualified will be doing it. I'm a bit more confident with this, because I had a very, well, almost identical property and you'll see, in the middle of my ward. And one of the neighbours, I'm going to call this, one of the neighbours contacted me because they were concerned about what was going to happen. And I said, there's nothing I could do to stop it happening, but if there's any problems, let me know. And she didn't let me know, so I went down to see her, and she was very delighted with it, because it was well-run and well-supervised. And I think Gary's and a lot of people have got it right, it's the unknown of what's going to come next door. And I think if it's not properly run, not for us to judge, but if it's not properly run and regulated and controlled, then it will have to move. And that has happened, I've got experience of when that has happened. And when I worked for Target Housing, we accommodated people on probation and what we euphemistically call ex-offenders. And that created even more fear, but we ran it well, and if anybody was not toeing the line for one to a better, we'd evict them. I remember one woman asked me when we were having the property adapted, who was coming in, and I couldn't lie to her, so I told her that it was probation clients and some ex-offenders. Would that bother you? She's all, no, we had students before, so this will be all right, you know, so there you go.
Thank you. I was worried about you were going in there. Peter, councillor Price.
Thank you, Chair. Just to make it clear, these are for children in care, and they're in care for many, many reasons, not criminals in care, for tragic situations, families broke up, the parents being killed, and we have to find places, and we try to get them fostered. My family are fostering two at the moment, they're in their teens, and they'll be 18, 19, I guess, before they move on. But the kids coming into care, and as a city council, we have a duty to find them the best option for development. It isn't stuck in a children's home with 20 other kids, it's trying to find them in communities, balanced communities. We had one a few months ago at Mosborough, created the same trouble, people were objecting because it was, I think it was four children. We had one at Southey, remember the Southey one, same thing. And unless we find reasonable places in communities where children can grow with examples from surrounding communities, then we're caught in danger. And I just think there's an attempt to do that. I understand the fear of the unknown, but a house with three kids in can't be anywhere. It could be three fostered kids who could be there for all ages, they wouldn't have to come here for permission. It's only because it's got somebody employed to look after the kids that it's come here. The size of a six-bedroomed house means you get three kids and staff, and that's the way. There may be problems, but on the whole, kids in our care are desperate for stability. And that's the only way we as a city council can offer this sort of stability, is to be in communities, in proper housing with neighbours. And I think I'm going to support the recommendation. I mean, I said I had a long, well, I didn't comment, I just listened to what they were saying, and the fears that's being said, I understand. And I guess the fear, the chief training centre has raised that, but chief trainers have to cater to people with learning difficulties, you know, autistic kids, it's a totally different concept. And I just think this proposal to spread kids around the city in small units is the way forward for a civilised society, and I'm going to support the recommendation, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. I've got two more speakers wishing to comment. I'm closing the list there because it's six o'clock, so I've got, is it five o'clock? Oh, I'm panicking. Okay, strike that. I guess we've not turned the clocks back from last weekend, okay? Councillor Sangha.
Thanks, Chair. I mean, I shall be supporting this scheme because of the merits of the individual scheme, as we've heard, because, you know, there is an inspection regime and the merits of the case of the particular site. But I'd just say, I completely agree with councillor Price. When I came on the council, we had just gone through the Toddwick Grange situation, which was absolutely appalling. 10 years later, when we did a best value review of the remaining children's homes, the large children's homes, they were poor and not delivering good outcomes for children. That's why we've had a policy for 20 years, as councillor Price has said. Irrespective of the political operation of the council, we have looked after children first, and we've gone for this policy of small homes, two to four children. And that means more communities are affected, and every time a community is affected, the system means that they have to put a planning application in. The local councillors listen to the local residents, the local residents are afraid and have all these concerns, and nine times out of 10, the organisations running these homes do a good job, and those children get better outcomes than they would have done in the old homes that this council was running in the 60s, 70s and 80s. So the policy is right, but what we have to do as councillors on the planning committee is be planning councillors, and that's look at the individual case. And I just feel this process is not a good one, because it means that we end up listening to our colleagues from the 28 wards, listening to their residents, and we as councillors on the planning committee are making different decisions to what they're hearing. So I don't think the position is, I don't think we're doing justice to the people in Sheffield in explaining the policy and explaining how we are doing our best for looked after children in Sheffield. Thank you, Chair.
That's a fair comment. And to close with, I've got councillor Peter Garbutt.
Thank you, Chair. I will be supporting this application. I think it has a lot of merit. I fully agree with what councillor Sangha has said before, that we deal with these applications and other applications for other types of development as well in a piecemeal way. So the planning people deal with some of it, and some other aspects are dealt with under other legislation by other people. And that feels clunky. Nevertheless, on the merits of this particular plan, I certainly will be supporting it.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, I'm going to go into the decision. So it's a change of use application, and the officer recommendation is to grant conditionally. So I'm going to go around the room and ask you if you approve, if you support the officer recommendation. Councillor Garbutt?
Yes, I'm with the officer recommendation here.
Councillor Homshaw?
I support the officer recommendation. Thank you.
Councillor Price?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Dams?
For the recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Nath?
For Chair.
Councillor Masters?
For Chair.
For the officer's recommendation, Chair.
Councillor Davis?
For Chair.
Councillor William?
Yeah, I can support this one, Chair, thank you.
Councillor Woodcock?
For Chair.
And councillor Gary Wetherall?
For Chair.
I think that's unanimous, Abi. Thank you very much. Thank you. We have one final item on the agenda, which is the list of newly submitted appeals and decisions received. There is hardly any content, there's only one record of one appeal received, and I'm not going to trouble Dinah by asking her if there's anything she wants to bring to our attention, so I'm just going to ask you to note that. Thank you. And just to, hang on, I buried my paper, I buried my paper when the 30th of November. Thank you very much. And say thank you very much for your attendance this afternoon. The date of the next meeting is 2pm on the 30th of November.